Good evening and welcome to our June 26 Town Council meeting. Madam Clerk?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on October 25, 2017, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on November 2, 2017. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilman Sorrello?
Present.
Councilman Guarino?
Present.
Councilman Kokovia?
Present.
Council President McCartney?
Present. Thank you. First, on our conference agenda, my council colleagues would like to welcome and thank Maddie Longo for being a... (laughter) I didn't know where to begin. So, any employee would be so pleased and proud to have Maddie working for them. You know, the dependability, the responsibility, all of that are such important characteristics. But Maddie encompassed more than that in the 16 years that I've been on the council. And it's just, I can't believe it's been 16 years, and Maddie just said she can't believe it's been a month already that she retired, and I think she looks great, so I think it looks good on her.[166.23][166.23](laughter) So, the council invited her back so that we can present this to Maddie. I have to read it because there's so much information in here. Madeline Longo was born in Orange and has lived most of her life in West Orange. Maddie and her husband Peter are the proud parents of Cheryl Marino and son-in-law Frank Marino, and they have three beautiful grandchildren, Matthew, Allison, and Anthony. Maddie began working for the township in 1989 in the municipal clerk's office on a two-week assignment which led to permanent employment. And eventually, her position as Open Public Records Coordinator, affectionately known as Oprah, although the tedious task, she handled her responsibility with the utmost efficiency. Her work ethic is like no other, and she set an example for those who were privileged to work alongside her. Her coworkers have the strongest admiration for Maddie, not only professionally but personally, and her absence will be felt by all. Prior to working in Town Hall, she worked as an office assistant in various professions, including accounting, research, and development, architectural design, and environmental systems, which would explain why she could answer any question (laughter) when you called the clerk's office before you got to Karen. Maddie has been a very active member of the community as well, serving on the West Orange PTA Fundraising Committee for 12 years, a member of the West Orange High School Carnegie Grant Steering Committee for Curriculum Opinion Survey Project, when Mountain High School and West Orange High Schools were combined, and as a member of the West Orange Recreation Department Adult Education Program Advisory Board. Maddie is a devoted member of St. Raphael's Church, which serves both the Livingston and West Orange communities. She has served two years on the parish council, 19 years on the Social Concerns Committee, during which time she served as a Eucharistic minister, is a member of the Renew Spiritual Program, and participated in organizing St. Raphael's as a host in the Share Self-Health and Resource Exchange Network Food Distribution Program with the assistance from the township of West Orange. Yep. The West Orange Town Council, along with Maddie's colleagues and friends, wish to commemorate her retirement and express their sincere and profound appreciation for her years of faithful and dedicated service to our community, and does further extend heartfelt wishes for good health, success, and much happiness in the years to come.
Very.
Thank you. You're very welcome.[325.19][325.19](applause)
My husband Peter, grandson Matthew, and granddaughter Allison.
Great.
If you could take a picture too.
This is from all of us. By the way. And by the way.
Moving, guys.
You got it? Okay.
Karen, Karen.
Smile, Karen.
Smile.
I'm really crying though because Maddie left me.
Smile.
Thank you, Mrs. Allison.
How is this loud and clear?
Yes.
It has been a great experience to have been a part of town government for many years, from being in the clerk's office to assisting the public. Getting a little emotional. It was truly the kind of work that I enjoyed, and I will be taking with me some very nice memories. And one of those nice memories will be council's tribute to me this evening. Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you, Matt.[400.13][400.13](applause)
Thank you for the flowers.
Would you like to make comments?
Yeah, we can do that.
You can. Of course.
Yeah, do you want to say something?
Who wants to go first? You want to go first?
Sure.
Maddie, I've had the privilege of knowing you since I was a kid, and you're just a special person, always so kind, always so helpful, always a great voice to hear when we're calling in for our help, and, you know, God bless you dealing with the Oprah and the requests, because I know that they come quite often and quite plentiful. So, thank you so much. Love you.[442.13][442.13](applause)
You want to say something?
Sure, I'll go.
Maddie, thank you for always addressing our questions with a smile.
Can you stand here?
Yes, yes. And your comments were beautiful. There's a lot of negativity out there with respect to public service sometimes, and you're a testament of the positives and the good work and the hard work, and always with a smile that public servants really are able to extend to the public. You know, again, that smile, it was always refreshing, and, you know, just to give you a little hug and see you smile again makes us feel special and grounds us on why we do what we do. Okay, so don't be a stranger and be around, we need you, all right? Keep it positive, we need to keep it positive, and it's people like you that help us do that. Thank you.
Appreciate that.[492.00][492.00](applause)
Don't sit down, Maddie.[494.00][494.00](laughter) Maddie, I just want to thank you with the rest of my colleagues, there's not much more I can say other than, before I was even a member of the Town Council, I'd come to Town Hall for questions, anything else, and, you know, you were there, always happy to help, and never, you know, never had an attitude, always positive, which is so good to see in government and people who work in public service, and, you know, I know the residents of West Orange were very well-served by your work in the clerk's office, and we'll miss you, but don't be a stranger, and do remember, you have friends in high places, so if you ever, you know, need anything, but always remember, your friends are here, and we thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.[534.95][534.95](applause)
So, I can still remember, when I first became involved with local government, it was basically filing Open Public Records Act requests.[547.16][547.16](laughter) And you and the whole office were so professional, so easy to work with, and you didn't hold it against me that I made mistakes in my applications, you were so generous with your advice, you got me into this.[569.32][569.32](laughter) You're part of the reason I'm here.[573.82][573.82](laughter) But seriously, I truly appreciate your professionalism, your excellence, and your patience, so thank you very much, and best wishes in retirement.
Thank you.[587.79][587.79](applause) My 15 minutes of fame, thank you all for the beautiful accolades, they will not be forgotten. Thank you again.
Thank you, Maddie.[600.82][600.82](applause) Do you have an update on redevelopment, or should we wait for...
Either way, it's up to you, you tell me. If you want to know what's going on down Main Street, I can let you know that.
In the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. As you know, the RRR, there's 34 total units there, there's 21 leases that are out right now, there are 14 individuals who are living in there now. I did speak to them this afternoon about commercial spaces, Mr. Guarino had asked, and they told me that they are negotiating commercial space, but they would not tell me with who at this point. So, that's going on, if you see, the trees are all planted, the walkways are done with the, you know, brick and mortar, and they said that they probably should have this unit fully rented by the end of July, and they'll be, they're talking about possibly having the battery building starting rented at the end of July, beginning of August. That's the best update I have right now.
Wonderful. As of May, they had an open house in May that I attended, and there were only nine units rented at the time, so I'm glad to hear that's moving right on.
As of today, there's 21 units rented, and there's 14 people living in there now.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yeah, now, Mr. Searis, maybe you could just update us, you and I had a conversation, because I went to visit over there, and I appreciate you working with Mr. Lepore on educating the new tenants on how to get the jitney, jitney six is going to make a stop there.
We are, we are working on making, adding an additional stop to our bus number six. We've talked to redevelopers about that, and we just haven't finalized the plan yet.
And they're, because I know they're going to be responsible for once there's a full jitney, it's just, it was kind of like, I was having a conversation when I went to look at the apartments, it's kind of like, you know, people are calling in to see where to get the jitney, and, you know, because if you're going to want to get a lease and you're going to work in the city, you know, you want to know, you know, what's going on now, as opposed to, you know, signing off and not knowing when it will be coming, so I appreciate getting them that information so they know, because they could even drive to Mississippi Bus Loop and park there if they wanted to as well.
Correct.
So, I appreciate you working out that, so hopefully she's able to, they're able to pick up more leases, so, you know, if you're a tenant, you want concrete information.
Absolutely.
So, thank you, and Mr. Lepore for working that offer for them. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. I just, to follow up on that, that was not a condition of the planning board application, if you recall, but it was certainly strongly recommended, and they did agree to that as the demand grew, that, just as you said, they would look into that jitney service.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
Yes, please. Do you have a timetable on when the jitney's going to...
Actually, I was talking to Mr. Lepore, we are putting together, hopefully, just to have them on our Route Six until the building gets completed. Once the building is fully rented, then they're going to pay for the jitney, as we had had a conversation about that.
So, when you say "they" are going to pay for the jitney...
The redevelopers.
And how are we going to come up with a price for that?
I think the price was already agreed upon, I'm not sure, though, I'd have to check the contract, I thought it was $30,000.
Yeah, $30,000.
I think it was $30,000 for the year, if I'm not mistaken, but I'd have, don't hold me to that, because I need to see, look at the contract.
Yeah, could you just send us the contract? It sounds like everybody else knows about it, but I don't recall it coming before the council, so I've, I'm not aware of it.
Well, I remember, I wasn't here, I remember the discussion, because that was always a concern of mine, so that's why I remember it.
Yeah, it's somewhere, it's somewhere in the agreement, I'd just have to take a look at it.
Okay, could you please send that?
Sure.
Thank you. Do you recall how, well, do you recall how the price was determined?
I do not.
Okay. Who determined the price? Was it Mr. Lepore?
I'm not sure, to be honest.
Okay. Is that something you could find out?
Sure. He's here.
Oh, Mr. Lepore, oh.
As soon as you said that, he...[877.13][877.13](laughter)
Would you like to...
Yeah, Jen, Len, do you have...
So, you're here 30 seconds, and we need you already.
Hey, Len, you got a second? Could you come up here for one second? We had talked about the jitney, and then paying $30,000 once it was fully rented, do you recall how we came up with the $30,000 number, or where that came from?
Probably at the time we did, that was about what our, the cost for drivers and operation would be at the time.
Right.
Not necessarily the case now, but...
Certainly not the case now.
Right. Okay, that's all I needed to know, I just wasn't sure how we came up with that number.
Mr. Lepore, I apologize, I interrupted you, that was very rude, I'm sorry, but you make a very good point, at the time you made the agreement, since then, both costs of operating and the cost of the drivers have gone up significantly, so are you familiar enough with the contract to see if there's any sort of built-in increases?
Every, let's see, we're in a three-year contract, so the third year of the contract starts Sunday, or actually Monday, July of 2018, so there is a change in the price effective this coming month.
My councilman was asking about the redevelopment.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, I'm not aware of that.
Okay.
Not aware if there's any escalators in there at all.
Okay. Could you just briefly describe what are the changes in Route Six that are going to occur, because I thought it goes down to the turnaround, and that's where the drop is, but, or that's the last pickup, and then it goes...
Route Six, which currently, the current last stop is at the Mississippi Avenue, Our Lady of Lords Church, continues in the morning to either the Orange or Brick Church train station. Depending on the time of day, it'll either go down Park Avenue to Brick Church, or perhaps even Washington Street. So, right now, it's heading south on Main Street from Our Lady of Lords and Mississippi Avenue, it would continue south on Main Street, simply go down, for example, Lakeside Avenue, make a stop at the corner of Ashland Avenue, the bus can then continue down Lakeside Avenue to High Street, to Park Avenue, or across High Street to go to Orange Train Station, or to Park Avenue and High Street and go down to Brick Church.
So, if I understand, and I'm sorry, I haven't ridden that route, so I'm not familiar, it currently makes the last stop at Mississippi at the turnaround, and then it either goes down, what, did you say, Washington?
It usually goes down to Park Avenue, Main Street to Park Avenue.
Oh, it usually comes all the way down Park Avenue, I mean, down Main Street anyway, to Park Avenue, so it goes right by...
So, it goes right by, but instead of parking or picking up on the other side, I would turn down Lakeside Avenue, and then just go back to Park Avenue via Watchung Avenue or High Street in Orange.
Okay. Thank you. I'm so glad you arrived.
Thanks, Len.
Mr. Searis, just as a follow-up, obviously because of the way that the transaction, or the structure of the transaction with DGP or Phase One, it matters how much revenue is being generated by the rentals. Do you have any information about how much revenue is being generated, or you or Mr. Gross?
I do not.
Through the leases?
You mean in terms of the rental, what they're actually getting for their rents? Having just recently looking at apartments, I could tell you that their rents are very, very progressive, so I would say their meeting is not exceeding their projections from what I, you know, what they originally projected at this point in time.
Could you tell me how they have to report the results of their operations, so we can figure out...
Yeah, they have to have an audit within a certain period of time, and from that audit, part of their audit requires them to basically create or have their auditors include a schedule, which goes through the terms and conditions and alimines it for us.
Okay. So, I remember we've talked about this a few council meetings ago, in terms of when we're going to start getting revenue, and I think you said you were confident that we're going to get revenue this year.
We are going to get, we are in the pilot now, we haven't billed them yet because of this transition period, and so we're going to build them after, once we know the tax rate for this year, because they're going to get a credit for the taxes for, so we're going to, we'll bill them an estimate for this year, and then next year, once they do their audit and they provide that, then we will true up for this year and make an adjustment in the estimate for the following year. So, it basically takes you six months to nine months to true up, but you're always a little bit behind, but that's the way, that's what all pilots work.
Okay. So, will the council be involved with that process of the billing? Okay, could I request that, when you do get to the point of billing, that you include us, so that we know what sort of the revenue generation of the pilot is going to be?
Yeah, I mean, I could provide you the analysis, basically give you the, you can have a copy of the bill.
Right, that would be, that would be, that would be good, thank you. If I could continue, Phase Two, you know, the documents have been hanging around for a long time, could you tell me what the status of that is?
Right now, we have not really discussed exactly how we're going to start Phase Two with them. Obviously, we want to complete what we have to complete tonight before we get into that, and then, once that happens, we're going to sit down with them and discuss exactly where we're going with Phase Two and how it's going.
Okay. Just want to ask a question about PRISM, because according to the town's online database, they have not paid their property taxes from May 1st, and I'm just wondering, is, now that it's almost two months late, has the administration given any consideration to perhaps demanding that they do pay their property taxes, since they're required to be current on them?
I was not aware that they weren't. As far as I know, the taxes on this building have been paid, I don't know if the rest of their taxes have been paid.
Well, PRISM doesn't pay taxes on Phase One now, because they have no ownership, but I'm talking about Phase Two, I'm talking about...
I was not aware that those taxes were not being paid, but I'll check on that tomorrow.
Okay.
And then we'll do what we got to do.
Okay. It's almost two months.
Yeah, I'll check on it.
Do you, do you have a mechanism in place where perhaps the tax receiver lets you know when those taxes are...
Well, we treat them like every other taxpayer, they, if they're behind on their taxes, they receive notices of delinquency through the tax office, that doesn't necessarily flow to the administrator's office, but they are notified that they're, you know, that they're behind, and they're expected to pay their taxes the time they manage.
My guess is that if they are two months behind, they were probably already noticed, because the tax collector does all that noticing, and then, if in fact I need something, I can go in there and ask them, but they don't come in and tell me everybody who's behind on their taxes in the township.
The May 1st taxes, as of May 11, on May 11, delinquent notices are sent out, so probably at least two, maybe three have been sent out by now.
Okay. And I know we talk about this a lot, and we seem to have a difference of opinion, I think because the redevelopment contract requires them to be current on their taxes, that perhaps they should be treated differently than any other taxpayers in town who don't have that legal requirement in a separate contract, so...
What do you mean by legally required to pay their taxes? Everybody's legally required to pay their taxes.
No, I understand. So, here we're going to get, I don't want to get into argument.
Right, I'm just, I'm not understanding what your question is.
Okay, the redevelopment agreements say that they have to be current on their taxes.
Okay.
So, that's different than most other taxpayers in the town, because they don't have a redevelopment agreement with the town.
Okay.
And, but you're right, you're absolutely right, that they have to pay property taxes on time, if not, they start paying. I'm just asking if, because there's this additional legal requirement through the redevelopment agreement, whether we should be taking steps to make sure that they comply with that, with that provision in the redevelopment agreement?
Usually, when I get on the phone with them, that they pay their taxes, I can tell you that. Now, I don't know why they haven't paid since May 1st, I was not aware of that, because, like I said, I was more concerned with Phase One, and I knew that the Phase One taxes were paid, but I'll check on that tomorrow, and I'll give them a call and make sure it gets paid.
Yeah, it's over $100,000, so I would think that somebody would notice that they haven't paid.
Well, I think that's unfair, that's really unfair.
It is, the tax collector has.
It has been noticed.
Oh, okay.
We haven't noticed it.
They have been notified, they are paying 18% interest, just like any other taxpayer, which is, you know, a premium that, you know, for being, for being late. You know, we pay close attention to our tax situation, and there are certain times we're more sensitive to others in terms of, certainly, we want to make sure by the end of the year that we get each and every tax dollar in, we don't always get that all the time, but we do, we do our best, and the taxpayer does an excellent job for a town our size and of our demographics, you know, we're collecting 98.5%, north of 98.5% tax collection rate. So, you know, it is being paid attention to, and, quite frankly, you know, we've, I think our tax collection department's done a bang, bang-up job of collecting taxes, redevelopment and otherwise, so...
Okay. So, I don't want to argue about it more, but it just seems to me, almost two months delinquent is not something that we want them to get in a regular...
They've been more than two months delinquent throughout, when they've been doing this redevelopment, and we've made a lot of interest, 18% interest on their money, so the taxpayers have made a lot of money on them paying their taxes late.
Point of personal privilege, taxpayer.
I'm just, my point is that, if your question is, are we going to default them for not paying their taxes in two months, I can tell you right now, that's not going to happen. Every redevelopment project is way too far ahead and is moving very well, and I'm telling you right now, we would not do that. Now, if I call them, and for some reason or other, they decide to tell me, we're not paying taxes, that's a whole other ballgame, but that hasn't been the case in all the times that I've spoken to them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on redevelopment?
Nope.
All right. You want to continue with council liaison, Joe, announcements?
I'm good.
Okay?
Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you, Council President and my colleagues. Okay, things rolling right along, everything else, coming up on July 21, July 21 at 2:00 PM, will be our first West Orange Idol Program, and we encourage, it'll be held in front of Edison Middle School, it's going to be a great day, there'll be food trucks out there, and we're looking for all the talent throughout the township of West Orange, young and old, to come and show us what you've got, and you can pick up one of the flyers, or go on our line to the downtown website at www.downtownwo.com and get an application, and sign up and show the township and the world what you can do, and there'll be trophies and awards, and we're looking for a great time, and even if you don't have talent, come on down and cheer them on.
Can you speed up, please?
And...
You can move up too, sir. We have seats up at the front. Give it a try.
Sorry, Rosary, anyway.
Give it a try.
Here we go, so July 21...
The furnace has downed 70, it's only 73 degrees outside, maybe a few degrees or thirty seven.
No.
Anyway, can, anyway, anyway, so we're looking for, it's the West Orange Downtown Alliance, sponsorships by the Chronicle, TAP, the Star Ledger, Regal Bank, WDHA, so we're looking for a good turnout, and we hope you come by and have a good time. Also, last night, we had our pedestrian safety advisory board meeting, very good, some great suggestions came about, we had people make, I'm asking to do a resolution that I'll present to the county within the next month or so, asking for additional safety and road calming measures, and I asked my board members and the guests at our meeting to send me an email and give me some ideas. Ms. Pat Sigilis came last night, she lives at Degnan House, and she gave some ideas about the left turn onto Mountain Way off Eagle Rock Avenue, and, you know, light safety and coverage down at Lady of Lords and right by Degnan House, we really appreciate that. Mr. Raski, you know, always... and get an application, and sign up and show the township in the world what you can do. And there'll be trophies and awards, and we're looking for a great time. And even if you don't have talent, come on down and cheer them on.
Can you speak up, please?
And...
You can move up too, sir.
You can move up, sir.
We have seats up at the front. Give it a try.
Sorry, Rosary, anyway.
Give it a try.
Here we go, so July 21st...
The furnace has downed 70, it's only 73 degrees outside, maybe a few degrees above.
Anyway, can, anyway, anyway, so we're looking for, it's the West Orange Downtown Alliance, sponsorships by the Chronicle, TAP, the Star Ledger, Regal Bank, WDHA. So we're looking for a good turnout, and we hope you come by and have a good time. Also, last night, we had our pedestrian safety advisory board meeting, very good, some great suggestions came about. We had people make, I'm asking to do a resolution that I'll present to the county within the next month or so, asking for additional safety and road calming measures, and I asked my board members and the guests at our meeting to send me an email and give me some ideas. Ms. Pat Sigilis came last night, she lives at Degnan House, and she gave some ideas about the left turn onto Mountain Way off Eagle Rock Avenue, and, you know, light safety and coverage down at Lady of Lords and right by Degnan House. We really appreciate that. Mr. Raski, you know, always coming on about road calming and traffic issues down by Turtle Bag Zoo, the increased traffic and turnout at Turtle Bag Zoo, so we're really working on that, so I've asked my board and that I'd like to put together eight issues to present through to you, and with us presenting a resolution to the county for additional traffic calming. The great thing is, and everybody thought it wouldn't happen, but Alyssa Drive was finally dedicated this past week on June 21st. The work should be done near the end of August. Mr. Lepore gave me a good lead, so about before school starts, Alyssa Drive light will be in, and the exciting thing about it, it's not just a traffic light, it's calming and it's also controlling the traffic from the side streets, so actually working in and reforming the ways people come out, especially when the students come out of Alyssa Drive, the light will be affected. So I thank my colleagues at the Board of Education, thank you to all of them, I thank my colleagues on the Township Council, and I thank the Board of Chosen Freeholders for all their work, and also, I got to thank Mr. Lepore and Mr. Harold Moss for putting it all together in a warrants, because without the hard work and all the grunt work done by you two gentlemen, the light would never have been a reality. Our next meeting at the Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board will be July 16th at 7:30 p.m., hopefully the room's available, at Turtle Bag Zoo, at the Educational Center at Turtle Bag Zoo. And at that meeting, hopefully, Mr. Lepore, that we'll have a presentation of the road diet or an explanation, so people will get an idea of the exciting things happening on Main Street. And also, Mr. Arnold Anderson of the Essex County Safety Department will be making a presentation that he made a few weeks ago on traffic safety and pedestrian safety at Seton Hall University. So we invite everybody to come, we'll be putting it out on the website and on Facebook, and Madam Clerk, I'll be sending you a request to change our date to the 16th because it was a conflict with others, especially with the planning board, so I'll be sending you...
Which month was that?
July.
Okay.
So, other than that, so, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, it's been changed.
July 16th, yes. So we're really excited about the things that our Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board has accomplished with the cooperation of all the other partners. You'll see it with the other traffic lights and the school crossing signs throughout the township, the signs on Pleasant Valley Way, and I'm sure Mr. Lepore can make a presentation later. And also, I'll be meeting with Mr. Lepore and Mr. Mike Damodoglu in the coming weeks to decide where we're going to put some of the LED stop signs throughout the township, particularly around the school zones, which we really need. So another thing I'd like to make a call out is that I'm going to be approaching the West Orange Council PTAs, because I'd like to get more of their input, particularly with pedestrian safety, and have somebody from their board come over and make presentations and attend our meetings. Also, I know Mr. Lepore, in the last meeting or the prior meeting, you already sent something to the state about the school zone for Liberty School, that, so that we know is moving forward, sir, so I thank you for that, and it's just good proactiveness. So my colleagues, things are really moving along with pedestrian safety, we're really excited about it, and we'll keep giving you updates, and if you have the time, please come to our pedestrian safety meetings, please participate, give us your ideas. We're a bunch of fun people, we're not bad, so I thank you all for coming, and also, like I said, West Orange Idol Day, July 21st, please come out for that. The street fair was a great success. I got the numbers from the Edison Museum, from Terry Jung, the acting superintendent, she said it was close to like 1,800 people, which was, you know, a good turnout. So things are really moving along, and I thank my colleagues for your time, and I look forward to more support coming from you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Council?
I do want to make a quick, or extend a quick update on the issue that we spoke about at the last council meeting on plastic bags. The state of New Jersey did, since our last council meeting, did pass legislation banning, oh, I'm sorry, extending a five-cent plastic bag fee, and also earmarking those funds towards a line of financing that'll be used to assess environmental issues. We don't know if the governor's going to sign the bill, but we, just, let's just keep an eye out, let's see where it goes, and what I would suggest is that we start using our tow bags or some of our alternatives that, so we can bring them to the supermarket so that we don't have to pay those five cents. Anyhow, I just wanted to give a quick update, just look at the news and check out, see what's going on, on this issue. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. Council Ms. Cirillo, what was presented to us was that we were hoping that the revenue generated would go toward the Healthy Schools and Community Led Abatement Fund, that's what we're hoping for, and with the political atmosphere right now, hopefully it doesn't go back into the general fund, and that the water testing can be done in the public schools, so that's what we were...
Absolutely, so we have to make sure that it goes into the right soup, into the right line item.
Thank you. Councilman?
Yeah, Sunday is, the West Orange Recreation Department will be sponsoring our second annual food truck festival up at West Orange High School, from, starting at 12:00 p.m., and will run to 6:00 p.m. Last year's event, it's right on the Pleasant Valley Way driveway, last year's event was very well-attended, a lot of residents, they have a Kohscher food trucks as well, and it was just a great, fun day, fun-filled atmosphere, sort of like the street fair atmosphere. So hopefully, if you're having a quiet Sunday afternoon, come on down and enjoy some varieties of some of the different treats that will be out there. Let's see, I wanted to, we were going to have down tonight, so I'm just going to give them a shout-out because they couldn't make it. We were going to have Mr. Bly, Mr. Moore with some of the girls' high school coaches from West Orange High School, from the athletic department, they received a very, very great honor this week at the high school. The girls', the girls' sports did very well this year. Every year, and they're in the Super Essex Conference, and every year, they, they rank, they rank the teams and see how they do in this conference. And out of 37 schools, both public and private, which is a big deal for the high school, our girls' sports program here in West Orange came in first place, and first time in history. So, great job, great work. Our coaches come in and work with the recreation department, with their feeder programs, and we're really proud of the progress in the joint partnership. And also, when they can come in, Council President, with just graduation the other night and summer break, the timing of it all, kudos to the boys' track team for their state championship, for Group Four, Section One championships, so it's great to see how our partnerships, tonight, you know, we have the high school track on the agenda again, and I can't express enough the partnerships and the progress that we're making. You may say, "Oh, she's talking about sports again," but you'd be surprised how many parents look to other schools, privates, and judge the high school by their performance with their sports programs. So we're glad to see the great progress there and the great partnership that we have with our recreation department, and, you know, it's a great investment for the township, so thank you, Council President, that's all I... Oh, wait, I do have one more thing in the mail today, and I'll give kudos to you in the chamber, I received the West Orange booklet that hit today, so a great reference, so folks, look for that, I won't steal your thunder, I know you've been working...
No, I didn't see it.
Been working hard on that.
I know, I've been working on it, I didn't see it.
It came today, and also, this is a great publication, so look for it in your mailboxes tonight or tomorrow, by the time it hits. But also, our public, West Orange Public Relations Commission, we've been a little bit quiet, but we've been active with, we're going to also create, we're in the process of creating a booklet of town resources that will be available at the end of this year. So, again, you worked on this for a long time.
Thank you.
We're working on our booklet, and they're both going to complement each other, and hopefully, with getting more information sources out there, we could get better information and communications to all our residents. So thank the chamber for me, that's great, thank you, great publication.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
So a few months ago, in an effort to conserve energy and tax dollars, the administration and members of the Environmental Commission met with Will Dan, if you recall, to implement the Direct Install Program. The program saves, pays 70% and the township pays 30% for energy-efficient upgrades, and just this past week, the administration, again, members of the Environmental Commission were invited to attend another meeting, this one with PSENG for the Direct Install Program Two, and this time, they will be looking at the fieldhouse, the library, the pump stations, the pool, recreation garage, recreation garage, and if we can find ways to make these energy-efficient upgrades, saves 70% for the township, so.
Great line.
I've been working with the West Orange Arts Council on an NEA, National Endowment of the Arts Grant for the valley area, that's, will be due in August, and I thought Jerry was going to mention about the Safe Routes to School Grant, another pooling ideas together for the Safe Routes to School. I like the idea that you were talking to the PTA and, or local PTAs to see what their needs are. This grant is due in August, but all of that input that you get could be for next year's application, so it's a good idea. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
This is to inform the general, I'm sorry, this is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on October 25th, 2017, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on November 2nd, 2017. Councilwoman Castellino, present. Councilman Cirillo?
Present.
Councilman Guarino?
Present.
Councilman Krokoviek?
Present.
Council President McCartney?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you. First thing on our agenda is public comment. If anyone has a comment to make, please introduce yourself, name and address. JB, can you tell us where you live?
Krista Senek, 15 Westminster Terrace, and Josephine. She's going to be on her own. So my daughter, Josephine, has 11 disabilities, and while you might see her as being mobile now, she has, she has very low tone and isn't able to take stairs easily or walk with stability. It is for this reason I am happy to know the zoning board did the right thing in approving the wheelchair ramp at 112 Conforty Avenue. However, I am also concerned that should Josephine need a handicapped accessible ramp, we will have to go through similar struggle as Ethan Roman's family. We, as a special needs family, have to fight at every turn for our child. We have to fight to accommodate our daily calendar with multiple doctor appointments and therapy appointments while still allowing time for our typical 15-year-old to have the quality of life he deserves. We fight the doctors when they say our daughter can't or won't do something, we fight with the county and the state to make sure Josephine gets the proper services, we fight with the general public for them to understand the needs and strengths and not gawk at that little girl with the braces, scoliosis brace and wheelchair melting down in the aisle at ShopRite. We should not have to add one more fight with the West Orange Zoning Board of Adjustment to give Josephine the right to access her home, a right that is assumed of those without disabilities. Josephine will continue to grow, as will her daily living and care needs. We need, we will need to make changes to our home originally built in 1932. We should not be forced to move from our home we've owned for 16 years in lieu of making handicapped modifications that will need Zoning Board of Adjustment approval. Again, that is not a fight we should have to bear. If we need to build a handicapped accessible bathroom on the first level of our home, we want to know that any minor variances to setbacks will not hinder our progress to give our daughter a quality of life many of us take for granted. It is for these reasons that I ask the Land Use Ordinance, Chapter 25, be amended to reflect the Fair Housing Act requirements. No family should ever have to endure the expense, emotion, excess time spent, or trauma Ethan Roman's family endured. The opposition needs to stop, and change needs to happen, starting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, I'm taking the little princess so she doesn't become an exploding pumpkin and disrupt everybody.
She's great.
Thank you, Krista.
Thanks, Krista.
Good night, ladies.
Hi.
Any other comment? Yes, sir.
Good evening, can everybody hear me in the back of the room? All right, the, my name is Robert Daniel, Buckingham Road. So the zoning board's hard treatment, we were reminded previously, of Ethan Roman's family and their saga of the ramp provided us with a reminder of the Americans with Disabilities Act. And here tonight, we have the air conditioner humming. So apparently, yet again, our West Orange, yes, our West Orange has neglected our citizens with disabilities. So let's talk about Title II of the American Disabilities Act. Karen, our clerk, and John, our administrator, you're probably familiar with the American Disabilities Act, and the ADA was updated 10 years ago. So nearly every time I'm up here, and excuse me, tonight I had to move to the front of the room because I couldn't hear, and every time I'm up here and I turn to the audience to make sure that Rosary and her friends in the back can hear me, but tonight, we're, it's warm outside, so the air conditioning is on, and it's humming really, really loud, so I turn and I really try to speak clearly so that everybody can hear every word that I'm saying. So many people attending our meetings in this room are senior citizens, some of whom have hearing problems, as well of, oh, thank you, as well as persons who are legally hearing impaired. Seniors should be proud to have reached this point in their lives that they can be involved in the affairs of their town, even though perhaps their ability to hear is not as good as it was when they were young, and yes, my hearing is not as good as it once was. So ADA Title II. My friends and fellow citizens can barely hear many of the councilmen and women speaking here. Tonight, fortunately, Victor spoke really clearly into the microphone. I don't want to get into who I can hear and who I can't hear, and who is really good and who isn't, because I don't want to waste my particular time. But as you're aware, I spoke last two weeks ago, and I am a citizen, was and I still remain highly agitated and annoyed at the $9.5 million bond ordinance that was passed two weeks ago. So I will not forget it, nor will I forget the ice bumper cars, nor will I forget tonight's turf, which Lenny is here bringing the turf at the football stadium for $800,000, nor will I forget Pleasantale parking lot for over half a million dollars. So therefore, in accordance with Title II of Americans with Disabilities Acts, and thanks to Ethan and his family's struggle at the zoning board, and Chairman Neuer's insistence that this go through, and Bueller's or Buckler's insistence that it go through three rounds of hearings, not being done in one, so I'm here by requesting from the town council the following, to improve the audio quality so that all of us here, including the folks watching on television, hello there on television land, that you improve the audio quality here to make it accessible to everybody, including the hearing disabled, for all seats in the chamber, so that Rob Daniel doesn't have to move from Robert Rashkis back there to sit in the front row so that he could hear when the air conditioning is running. That is not in accordance with the American for Disabilities Act. Everybody is supposed to be able to hear what is the proceedings, we want to hear what Susan has to say and what Michelle has to say, and when Karen makes her announcement, we want to hear what she has to say, and when John is responding, we want to hear what John has to say, and so do the people who are listening through the television. So the audio system should be upgraded with new speakers and a set of microphones so that we also can hear persons at the dais when they speak, and when people move away or when they're at the zoning board and are making a presentation, which Susan sees frequently, and they can't figure out, so they should have microphone lapels, microphones on their lapels. And the air conditioning system in this room should be upgraded, I'm sure that's a project that Lenny can handle, with a quieter fan or an entirely new system with a proper, with more than one noisy duct that increases the noise level in the entire room so that we can't hear anybody talk. So if our town can issue a $9.5 million in bonds for all sorts of good stuff, then most certainly you can spend some... So, if our town can issue a $9.5 million in bonds for all sorts of good stuff, then most certainly you can spend some money so that all of us attending, all this meeting, and everybody watching on television can hear the important stuff that's happening here in this town council. So, and they can hear what you're saying and what you're responding. A formal letter will follow. I thank you for your time. Thank you very much and have a good evening. Thank you. And now I will go back to a seat in the bleachers.
Any other comments?
Good evening. Once again, my name is Patricia Segalas. I'm at the Degnan House in West Orange. And first, I'd like to say thank you for allowing us to attend Nikhil's tribute two weeks ago. However, there still was a lot of mix-up as far as transportation. They didn't know if they were still going to be able to provide us transportation, although I understood that it would definitely be granted for us, that we would definitely have transportation. However, coming down to the final line, transportation was still questionable because a co-resident of mine and myself, we were down there at 4:30, quarter to 5:00, because we were told to be down there, quarter to 5:00, 5 o'clock, transportation would still be there. 5:00 after 5:00, no transportation. 10:00 after 5:00, no transportation. Finally, my friend called, spoke with Mr. Sayer, finally, after he was able to get his number, and he had to call the gentleman to see where he was. Once again, I don't know where the lack of communication comes in here, but somebody needs to get together and they need to find out exactly where this lack of communication is coming from. We depend on this transportation to get around, both for grocery shopping, for making little trips to the Living Sim Mall, which I understand had been cut short the last two weeks. They were not allowed to come and get them. And then hearing how much thousands and thousands of dollars is being spent on this program and that program, and yet here we are, senior citizens, begging, literally begging, for a ride, to go to the mall, to go to a tribute, to go anywhere. Why do we have to? I think we've paid our dues, really, sincerely. And many of you are going to be in my position one of these years. And where, what are you going to do? Are you going to have to wait and beg for transportation? Are you going to have to beg to be able to go to see a tribute for a young boy that was killed? Or even to go to, let's say, a street fair or anything that's provided by the township? I mean, it's kind of ridiculous that we have to go through this as seniors. Once again, I think we've paid our dues. Don't we, aren't we, you know, considered like people as well? That we should be able to, you know, get to these places if we don't have cars or we don't have people to provide us with a ride? I mean, seriously, it's getting ridiculous. And I, once again, I don't know where the lack of communication is. Things are not posted and we're just not sure. People don't even want to sign up because they're like, oh, well, we're not going to get the transportation anyway. But I just want to let you guys know, I mean, it was a very nice tribute for Nikhil and we did appreciate it, those of us that did, were able to attend. But once again, please, if you can kind of get your communication network together and try and come up with another reason or, you know, or another way to get us to our, you know, the places where we'd like to go, we'd like to enjoy these things as well as the regular populace of the town. That's it. Thank you.
Excuse me, excuse me. What was your address again?
It's 430 Main Street. It is the Degnan House.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes, ma'am.
Rosary Morelli, Ralph Road. Tonight, there's a million things I want to talk about, but I have to tell you, Thursday night was an experience I hope we never have to go through again. Something needs to be done, new board, whatever, but that family should have never gone through that. Happily, it turned out well. Tonight, I'm going to talk about the ice bumper cars. I happen to live in the area, so I have an interest in having an amusement park ride or whatever you want to call it in a township park in the middle of a residential section. My neighbor, who couldn't come to the meeting tonight, asked me if I were to read comments, so that's what I'm going to do. He did his due diligence. Hopefully, that will happen before anything gets, takes place. And you do your very, very intense research as well as due diligence. You know, an Open Public Meetings Act is that, but if it's open and people are sitting in an audience and can't hear people speak and just see our lips move, it's not an open public meeting. So, we need to do something about this sound. Okay, these machines are battery operated and are designed to be used on a professionally groomed ice skating or hockey rink. The ice must be smooth and consistent and constantly maintained by a Zamboni machine. The ice surface is not smooth and perfectly level and the small wheels of each ice bumper car will be stuck, even worse, will slide to the lowest point of the rink. These machines are not designed to be used on a haphazardly frozen surface. These machines are used outdoors in Providence, Rhode Island, on a professionally designed ice rink. The ice surface is frozen to a level concrete pad and maintained by a professional ice manager. The surface is maintained with a Zamboni machine. These machines are also at the Toledo Zoo and the same situation is required to use them. With the freezing and thawing cycles due to global warming occurring, the actual amount of times that these machines will be in use will be limited. O'Connor Park has a very limited parking, has limited parking, no restrooms, no heated areas to warm up, and no first aid facilities. O'Connor Park is located at the top of Laurali Road, which can be a dangerous place to drive during winter weather. Parking on the streets around O'Connor Park is not an option during the winter months, and I can tell you that's true, to drive during the winter weather. Parking on the streets around, I just said that, piled up, the snow is piled up all along the two sides of the street, usually only one car can go through at a time, and the machine will fall through the ice. The best and probably least expensive option would be for the township to rent ice time at the Cody Arena. The ice bumper cars could then be used year-round and the ice would be maintained professionally. The mayor made a remark during June 12th council meeting that West Orange does not have good hills for sleigh riding. Actually, it has lots of great hills, such as the golf course on Pleasant Valley Way and Mount Pleasant School. However, very few people go sleigh riding anymore. People have less free time and during the winter, they tend to go to professionally managed ski resorts to ski, snowboard, or go snow tubing. Additionally, with the development of gigantic indoor water parks in the Poconos, such as Camelback, Great Wolf Lodge, and Calahari, there are many options for winter recreations merely one hour away. Freezing the street hockey rink in O'Connor Park and buying some ice bumper cars is never going to work for a township simply because the competition one hour away in the Poconos has such awesome, complete, all-season resorts. As crazy it sounds, it may be cheaper and a better option to work out a special deal with Mom or Pocono Resort whereby West Orange residents get a special deal during the winter to enjoy all the amenities they offer. Another serious issue, when I spoke to someone else who knows somebody in Providence, liability. Mr. Sayer is real big on liability, right? And the cost. Thank you.
Thank you. And is, yes, sir?
Hi, excuse me, Lawrence Swidvilaus, Prospect Avenue in West Orange, New Jersey. Let's see, good evening. Our Green West Orange hosted its first open garden event with invited speaker Kim Ironman. Kim is a native plant specialist and can name any plant that you point to, so she can tell you whether it's invasive or a plant with a purpose. Does it provide food for migrating birds? Does it keep harmful ticks at bay? Does it attract bees, butterflies, hummingbirds, and insects that these creatures feed on? Kim answered many questions about bees, deer, plants, and aroma, trees, watering, and so much more. And she offered fabulous alternatives to the popular cancer-causing pesticides, such as Roundup, which is banned in many European countries, Canada, and California, and hopefully soon here in West Orange. And how to avoid planting invasive plants whose sole purpose is to just look nice. Invasive plants, such as honeysuckle, butterfly bushes, Japanese maple, and goldenrod. Who knew I have these species in my yard? And many of the native plants have the word weed in their name. These were all things we learned at the fabulous presentation. Ecobeneficial is Kim's website. Three quick things I learned that I'd like to share with you and the public is, one, when shopping for a new plant, ask, is this native? I'll warn you, when you go to Metropolitan, they can't answer that because there are no native specie plants there, so something that we get to work on with them. Rethink the notion that a nice yard is perfectly manicured and is covered with fluffy green grass. Picture a meadow in your yard and plant with diversity. Make sure you share your ideas with your neighbors. Planting with a purpose is the only thing that should be invasive, because good ideas grow like weeds. Our Green West Orange would like to share with each member of this council a native plant to be brought to your home and enjoyed. It's an Anis hyssop, and they're really kind of cool. They're tall, they get purple on the top, they do require some water.
Thank you, Sally.
Thank you.
I need my, need my phone. It's got some interesting letters. I'll get the spelling for you, councilman. Our Green West Orange has had over 3,000 visitors to our website in the last 30 days. We will continue to advocate for issues that promote safety, green initiatives, and affordability. We are all volunteers, all residents of West Orange, and are always looking to connect with others who want to see positive change in West Orange. Some say we complain a lot, but you live here, too. Sometimes, there's a lot to complain about. So, please visit us. Info@argreenwestorange.org is our email. OGWO.org is our website.
Back off the mic.
Oh, that's me. So, I apologize, apologize. I was here Thursday evening as well, on a side note, and I found it quite embarrassing, humiliating, and very maddening, what was I, what I was seeing at the zoning board meeting. And I'm not even, I wasn't even the applicant. I sat in a big room filled with people, we hardly could hear. Sat close to this side, so I could hear. We videotaped against the chairman's wishes. Those, the videotapes are now available on the website under the, under Our Green West Orange backslash videos, so you can kind of see what went on there. But I think we'll be hearing more about what happened and the behavior of the zoning board. Thanks so much for your time and happy summer.
Thank you.
Good evening. Sally Malanga, Ridge Road. Those little seedlings that we gave you will grow to be about four feet and they'll be quadruple stems, and you can plant them in full sun to part shade, and they will have beautiful spiky blue flowers. And if you're lucky with it about six weeks, they will be quite large. So, please enjoy and you'll catch some nice bee action with it, too. Make sure you order them every three days or so. Echoing my colleagues, we cannot hear in this chamber. I realize it's been like that for years and years, and we sort of just put up with it. And suddenly, it dawned on all of us at once that maybe we should just ask you to fix it and make it easier on us, because it's, it's discomforting to have to stand up from the back and yell, "We can't hear." It interrupts the speakers, it's, it kind of ruins the rhythm of the meeting. So, I think it's easily fixed. I'd simply like to ask Mr. Sayers, Mr. Lapore, can you put speakers in the back and can you replace the HVAC blowers? And I think that ought to do it. I also want to mention the rude behavior of the zoning board chairmen and members over the handicapped ramp. It was very embarrassing. I have spoken before that board many times and have also been very badly treated and had my expert witnesses also badly treated. It's really unnecessary. They're very combative, they're very critical, they're very rude. I feel that when you're able to, you all have appointees, I believe, on those boards, that board needs to be replenished with fresh, courteous, professional individuals. I also want to mention another thing that's on the agenda tonight. You're supposed to be speaking about the Prism Green Transfer of Ownership. This is related to the downtown redevelopment. We have never known the actual true beneficial owners of those LLCs. We don't know the individuals. It's very mysterious. Once again, representing the public, we'd like to know who the people are that are behind these LLCs. My understanding is that you cannot open a bank account without having that information, and since we back that project with our collective tax dollars, we ought to know who is benefiting from that money. I also want to really thank you from the bottom of my heart for the yes vote, for the appraisal on the few shreds of forest that we have left as open space in West Orange for possible acquisition. The members of Our Green West Orange enthusiastically support the acquisition of open space as a means of tax savings, kind of a unique idea. But the more we cut trees and the more we build homes and apartments, the more we must raise our taxes. Residential is a, is a loss as a rateable, and I think that that's something that people are not aware of. We lose money on every home and apartment that we build. So, open space is a huge benefit to the health, safety, and well-being of every living being in this township. So, thank you very much for that vote. I appreciate it and I hope it moves to the ultimate acquisition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sally, what's the name of the plant?
You're going to love it when it, when it grows. Got to get it out of that cup. It's Anis hyssop, H-Y-S-S-O-P.
Thank you.
And it is a terrific pollinator, attractor, as well as being deer resistant. And you know what? I think next year, we ought to have Kim Ironman back again, because she was absolutely captivating to the people who were there. And when you realize that if you want butterflies to your garden and you plant butterfly bush, for example, which most people think that's all they need to do, you find out that it's actually a butterfly death bush, and then you're horrified. She wants you to plant spice bushes. That's what butterflies want. So, the little things like that, that you learn, that make a difference, actually a life or death difference for the other living beings that are existing around us. So, maybe in conjunction with the Environmental Commission, we could invite her back again. Maybe actually could even invite her back in the winter and we can learn more. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Good evening. Claire Silvestri, 20 Grandview Avenue. I hadn't planned on talking this evening. I'm getting over a cold. I'm getting over a cold. But I want to just reiterate what some of the other citizens have said this evening about this not being able to hear in the council chamber. Mr. Gross and Mr. Sayers know that this goes back years, that I have spoken about the problems with the sound system and not being able to hear speakers. We have spent millions of dollars in this township on various projects and yet cannot seem to fix the sound system. Now, tonight, I just checked my weather.com app, and it is 72 degrees outside. The thermostat that is set that is behind a locked box is at 70 degrees. I personally am kind of chilly, beside the fact that every time that blower goes on, you cannot hear. I'm sitting in the middle of the chamber, and I can't hear. This is absurd, that we, the people of West Orange, come out to hear, to an open meeting, to hear our public officials discuss important business relative to our lives, and we cannot hear. This microphone is not working well. I'm sure the people back there, when Mr. Svetvillas came too close to the mic, it reverbed. The system needs to be fixed, and the air conditioning, something needs to be done on it. And quite honestly, tonight, there isn't a reason for it to be blowing as much as it is. Just a couple of other things I heard tonight. The issue of the jitney, I am so excited to hear that Prism is going to be reimbursing us for that, because I was here the night of the planning meeting, I think two planning meetings, where that very issue was discussed, and the people from Prism insisted that they would not pay for the jitney. So I don't know where it got into the contract, but I'm very glad to hear that they will be reimbursing us. And I'd like to hear more about the methodology in that. And finally, this question about them being delinquent on the taxes on a major parcel of their property. They have something on the agenda tonight about transferring of ownership. I would argue that if Prism wants to have the township approve of some of their business dealings, they should be up to date on their taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? We'll be right after him, sir. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Mark Meyerowitz. I live at 19 Howell Drive. I wasn't going to talk about any of the usual topics tonight, but I am concerned about what I heard from the lady with the disabled child. And I read a little bit about that. I don't know much of the details about what's going on. But it seems like the township rules and regulations that are really meant to protect the homeowners and to protect the citizens, make sure the town keeps its attractive appearance, that the houses keep an attractive appearance, may be being used against this family in a way that is really having a chilling effect on their right to use their own property. And I think it's kind of sad. From what I understand, there are people who don't like their plans for a ramp, if that's true, and have been trying to tie this up in the planning board or zoning board or whatever board it is that's out there. But it doesn't make sense to me that the township rules and regulations should have such a negative impact on a homeowner. It's their home, it's their property, and I think that we know that this body is really the ruling body in the township, and that you should give a waiver to this family to overrule this planning board or zoning board or whoever it is, or whoever's got an ax to grind, and let her work with Mr. Lepore or the township engineer or whomever it is to come up with a good plan that's safe and that will work for them, and that will not take six years, and won't cost her, you know, $200,000 in legal fees, and let the people who own the property do what they have to do with the property. It's their house, it's their property, it's their town, and I can't see why the town council would not be willing to, you know, make an exception for this family and override the planning board and just tell the planning board, "Sorry, we're going to let these people live in the town," because the rights of the property owner are more important than the planning board. Thank you. And also, the flag is blocking picture of President Trump. I know that's an accident.
Any other comments? Yes, sir? Yes. Welcome.
Good evening. I've learned from the lady that was here before that if I talk loud enough, maybe I'll be heard. So thank you for this lesson. My name is Michael Landsberg, 134-138 South Valley Road. Yes, that place that was abandoned so long with Pizza Luna and others. So I took it upon myself to buy and renovate it, and I found it extremely, extremely hard to populate it with commercial tenants. Yes, I know, as Janice told me, this is a problem all over New Jersey. Tough luck for you, Mr. Investor. Big mistake you've done. Oh, well, you know, you have zoning regulations, you have to abide by them. Oh, yeah, come and read it, no worries, and don't forget to pay the lawyer and anyone else on the process with your engineer and with your architect, $15,000, $20,000, just to hear at the end of the road, the no. So I'm thinking to myself, it took me a year, thank you, Mr. Lepore, for helping me on that, to convert the parking from one hour to three hours. I cannot get any tenant to move in there because of all sorts of regulations, subcodes, zoning, and all sorts of things that the people of West Orange wrote so we can follow. Yes, I understand the rule, it's for us. However, if we will not find a way to help each other with business, then I will be the next foreclosure with the rest of all the empty stores that you have in West Orange. Now, I know this is not about competing with Amazon and what's happening in this new century of lifestyles and commercial spaces changing. But if we, the people, will not take the initiative to change some of our regulations and zoning and processes, then we will not have taxpayers, because people like me will foreclose. So if I call someone and ask their help, let's say the Department of Engineering, and leave 10 messages, and I cannot get an answer, and the email that I've heard over the phone is incorrect, and I don't get an answer, so I lost a few clients. And if I have to wait 10 days for the zoning or the business committee or official to answer, and people just get tired and they go elsewhere because they have other opportunities, then I lost them. What can I do? And I will finish with a story that I would never believe that I could say even. I went to Newark, the building department. I submitted a permit. I got it back in two days. I explained to them why it is urgent. The following day, I got inspection. Then they came back again for another inspection, and those of you that know the process, I got a cutting card. Today, PCG were there. Eight days from submission of the permit to the cutting card. I would never believe that if someone would tell me that that would happen for me in Newark. Help me, help others, to get clients, to get business, and get taxes back to us so we can do better. Thank you.
Hi, Anthony Puglisi, representing County Executive Joe DiFincenzo. I just want to thank Councilman Guarino for giving my report about Alyssa Drive. Just want to reiterate, that was a nice project of the township, the Board of Education and the county coming together to fulfill a need that was expressed, to make that intersection safer for pedestrians and motorists. And like the councilman said, we are working with the contractor to make sure that it's done expeditiously, and definitely by the beginning of the school year, that light will be up and running. Just a note for some events that are happening. In July, every Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, we have Wellness on the Waterfront, which is on the Orange Reservoir at the South Mountain Recreation Complex. It's a combination of yoga, movies, arts and crafts, and concerts, and it's to promote the outdoors, and it's part of Parks and Recreation Month, something that we do every July. And then also during July and August, on Wednesdays and Thursdays, we have extended hours at Turtleback Zoo. The zoo normally closes at 4:30. Those hours are extended until 8:00 PM. And then on Wednesday nights, sorry, blanked out there for a minute, on Wednesday nights, on the roof of the parking garage, beginning on July 11th and going through the end of August, we have our Zoo Vies, which is our Beverly Piper movie program that we do on the top floor of the parking garage. The Zoo Vies events are free, the Wellness on the Waterfront events are free. Unfortunately, admission to Turtleback Zoo is still regular admission. But we hope to see you up there. And as always, all this information is on our website, which is essexcountynj.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony, what time are the wellness? You said Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. What time is the wellness, is the wellness program?
So seven o'clock would be the standard time. The Arts and Crafts, I believe, starts at 6:30.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll close public comment portion of our meeting. And any response from my colleagues? I just would say, though, that since there were so many comments about the zoning board application, we did receive today, there is a letter here, I haven't had a chance to read it, from the town planner, that he is writing to believe the process of amending our land use ordinance. So fortunately, this didn't happen before that application, but this will look into amendments to the land use ordinance that was referred to this evening.
Council President, I wrote that letter to the town planner, and you have copies on it on your --
This was a discussion that we also had. Sorry, did I read the whole thing? Yes.
I apologize, you're exactly right. Can I just?
Okay. This was a letter that was written by my colleague. This is also a discussion that the planning board has had.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that the record was clear, that this was not a letter from the town planner, it was a letter to the town planner. And just requesting that we start the process for amending our land use ordinance to better reflect, I think, both the law and the community's consensus on how disability applications should be handled.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much, and the discussion has already started. I can finish. A lot of comments. John, I don't know, John or Jack, if you want to talk about the audio in this building, in this room, council chambers, we've been hearing that for many, many years.
Yeah, the audio system itself is functioning and functioned properly. The audience is right, you need to speak into the microphone in order to make sure that it's sufficiently loud. If it still needs to be, we can tweak the volume a bit higher if necessary. But it is all about speaking into the microphone and speaking up when you're speaking. And then I suspect that, in reference to the air conditioning system, that we have not really addressed, and we can have a conversation with engineering about that to see what the impact of that might be, you know, how much we could reduce the volume from the blowers, and what that would mean in terms of cost. But speaking loudly and speaking into the microphone will certainly go a long way to solving any problem, as well as when there is seats to the front, everyone is welcome to come up front. Or to the middle, wherever they feel most comfortable, but certainly speaking into the microphone.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
So in regards to just better improvement of the acoustics, because, you know, I have a tough time. I always, you can't really turn. You have to be like this in the microphone for everybody to hear you. So in regards to other equipment that is available out there, or another way to improve the acoustics, you know, if we could look at that, that may help, number one. Number two, in regards to, I guess maybe with certain speakers, I know that there is equipment out there to help with the amplification of the sound.
The amplifiers are sufficient, that is not the issue. The issue is getting in and close and speaking up. Now, can we, if you would like, you're not satisfied with this type of microphone, and you would like one, for instance, a lapel microphone, we could look and see in getting that. You know, that's really personal preference for you all, whether you want to be wearing a microphone that moves around with you no matter where you go or what you're saying, or whether you want to speak into the mic, and, you know, this type here. That, we can address that if you --
Then you'll hear us with heavy breathing.
Well, there'll be no side comments. But the amplification system works. It works more than sufficient. We've been through this. It is, again, to the extent that we all need to speak up and directly into the microphones. We can get more sensitive microphones, but then we all, you know, to the extent that you have more sensitive microphones, at times, that causes to have feedback. So if you want something that's going to be more sensitive, it's got to be a lapel-wearing, and that will, everything that you say will be picked up on it, and everyone will hear. So we can get that for you individually. But that's personal preference as to whether you want to wear something or whether you want to speak into these. These microphones, they work. All you have to do is speak into it directly and --
All right. Maybe the blower situation would be quicker result.
As I said, that's something we could look and see what the cost of that is and how much it could actually be reduced. I just don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, but we could, well, I'll have Mr. Lepore look at it. All right, thank you. Go ahead, Council President, sorry.
I actually had a question for Jack with the comments about the transportation glitches still going on. We advertised that transportation is available, it should be dependable as well.
Unfortunately, I tend to disagree with the comments that were made here this evening. We were asked to provide transportation to that event, which we did, and the problem was that our driver got stuck in traffic, and there was more people than we thought we were going to have to pick up, and there was only one driver. So the bottom line is, is that happens a lot. If there's traffic, we're not going to get there by nine o'clock. We might get there by 9:30 or 9:15. Excuse me, I'm talking. Excuse me. I talk to you on the phone about this all the time, okay?
Jack?
Yes, Mrs. Morelli. The bottom line here is, is that we sit down --
Not fair.
Do you want me to respond or not?
No. Just, thank you. I was hoping that there was a system in place, and it sounds like there is.
We do have a system in place.
Yes.
And the way our transportation system works is we run three buses a day, and anyone who calls in for a ride, it gets put into a priority order. So if you're going to a doctor, that's a priority, rather than if you're going to visit somebody. And these calls every day are placed in priority order, so that there are many people who call us every day who have doctor's appointments and have to go to certain locations or to the ShopRite or to other places. Those things are always put into priority order, so that if you call in late in the afternoon, and you want to go somewhere within 15 or 20 minutes, and our buses are all out on the road doing what they're supposed to be doing, the dispatcher will say, "Unfortunately, we can't do that right now." But if you call back later, or if you call back and schedule an appointment for some time, then we will pick you up as long as you schedule an appointment. The biggest issue that happens is when people call up at 10 o'clock in the morning and want to be somewhere at 10:30 in the morning. When we have these three buses running, we have people that are scheduled to go to different places. And a lot of times when that happens, the driver, our dispatcher will basically say, say, unfortunately, we have our three buses tied up right now, and we can't take you at 10:30. You know, so most people, and I can tell you, I get some complaints, but I don't get a lot of complaints about our transportation system.
Good, thank you.
Council President, could I?
Yes, please.
Ask a question, thank you. So, after the last time you came down, Mrs. Sagalas, I had immediately spoke to Ms. Elinardi the next morning, because I was concerned with your concerns, and, so I understand, you advocate, which is great for some folks in your building, that, that you have your own vehicles, so that's wonderful. But she could coordinate these, these larger trips, so, so from what I understand, this, you know, this was an event that was posted ahead of time, and from what she had told me, and maybe at your next board meeting, Councilman Sorrello, you could have a conversation. Because my suggestion was to have a meeting in the building. It seems like these issues are coming from the Degnan House lately, and maybe if there's just a little meeting there with transportation to go over, like, you know, just to go over the rules and regs on ordering transportation, like with Mr. Sayers said. So, the residents just aren't hearing things from other residents, they're actually hearing it from the source, and just to, you know, educate newer residents that maybe...
There are rules and regs up online.
They're up online.
If you read them, it tells you exactly how we schedule people. I had, I had a conversation with Ms. Morelli about a situation the other day, and if you read what it says, it says, yes, we will do this not as a priority. So, what that means is that we have to prioritize our transportation system, because we have so many citizens in town that need to go to doctors and other places. For instance, this incident that we're talking about, this was on a weekend. We had to pay someone overtime to come in here to drive these people back and forth to this, to this event. Now, I can't bring in three drivers out over the weekend and pay them overtime, so we, we brought in one driver, and there were, there were, I think there were close to 20, 22 people who went to the event. And we picked them all up, and we brought them all home.
And it was, you know, and you did it in advance, and that's what needs to happen here, as far as the rides that are scheduled during, during the, the day. But whatever the case may be, somewhere there's, they're getting, you know, other residents are given some other residents, whether it's misinformation or, or not understanding the process. So, my suggestion is, it seems to be building-related. I think that maybe some communication amongst themselves in the building with a, a little meeting would be helpful, and...
I can tell you, Mrs. Elinardi knows the system very well.
Oh, I know she does.
She knows the system very, very well.
I know she does. And she, and I know she's very caring for her residents, and I know...
And she calls me directly also.
I know she does.
When she needs things, and I try to get them done for her.
So, I just, you know, that's just a suggestion. I think this, you know, this could be helpful for the, this situation. Not saying that, you know, there's always a situation per se, but I think some miscommunication gets out there that needs to be clarified on our end.
And just on one other note, I can tell you right now, and I'm not sure about two towns, but there are, I don't think there's any towns in Essex County that run three senior citizen buses a day. A day.
Oh, I know.
I said, I said, there are very few towns in Essex County that run three senior citizen buses a day, other than West Orange. You're welcome.
Could I just, I, I know it's not my turn to speak, but I just wanted to clarify something, because I thought Ms. Sagalas was saying that she was getting the bus transportation for the Badlani event, and I thought that actually happened on the night of our council meeting.
It was, I'm sorry, but it was overtime, because it was at night.
Okay, so it wasn't on the weekend?
No, but it was overtime.
Okay.
We had to pay overtime.
Okay.
You're right, it was at night, it wasn't on the weekend. That's my mistake.
Okay. And if I could, do you know when the, the, the transportation actually arrived there? Because I, I don't think Ms. Sagalas said when it arrived there, but she said we were, they were told to come down to the front lawn.
It actually arrived around 5:30.
Ms. Sagalas, we're, we're trying not to get comments from the, from the audience. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I know you want to speak, but I was actually asking Mr. Sayers.
I got a phone call from Mrs. Morelli, who's told me that the, the bus was not on time. I called our...
That never happened, I'm sorry.
Who called?
All right, who?
Depends what you want, that never happened. I wasn't in that whole circle. When I arrived at the event, I was told what happened.
If you're going to let her speak, have her come up here.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Please.
Okay, let's take a step back. Maybe it wasn't Mrs. Morelli who called me, okay? Maybe it wasn't Mrs. Morelli, but whoever this woman's friend was, she mentioned that her friend called me. Who was your friend who called you?
Jack.
Frankie Grasso, okay.
Don't miss the road.
Okay. And you want to know something? I apologize, you're absolutely correct, it was Frank Grasso.
I was standing right there.
Yes, it was Frank. And he called me and wanted to know where the bus driver was. I called our transportation division, and the bus driver was picking up people at other locations, and we actually had more people going to the event than we had expected. So, by the time he made his rounds around the town, he got there at 5:30, and I told Frank that he would be there within the next 15 minutes, when he spoke to me.
Thank you, Jack.
Just wanted to clarify.
Yep.
Thank you. I just, I'm just going to finish with Mr. Landsberg, because I'm, thank you for coming, and I, sounds, it just, I, I don't know what your experience. We are, we will be considering the master plan at the planning board. I would like to hear more about what happened. There is a technical review committee that I, that has been set up for 20 years, for anyone that is investing in town, to go before the committee first, to walk through before you start paying professionals, to see, to walk us through the process. So, I'm sorry if you had this unfortunate experience, but the planning board is going to look at the master plan, and areas that may need to be rezoned. So, I would like to hear more about what your issue is. Thank you.
Who will take my hand, so I can go into that door to where?
We have a technical review committee in the planning department.
So, I need to go to the planning department or ask for this committee?
Yes.
Thanks.
Anyone else have comments?
I can call.
No, please, no, go ahead.
Two things make me happy about the zoning issue. Number one, that it's been resolved. That was the most important thing, it was nice to see the family, really happy, and seeing the child happy, so that, that we should be, we should commend ourselves for the advocacy on behalf of this family. And number two, the fact that we're discussing amendments, and some issues were brought up, amendments to the ADA, Mr. Daniel spoke about that. I hope that legal's looking into that at this point.
Yes, sir.
So, we can issue the right amendment, so that any future requests with regards to any outburdenses are in line with, with the existing laws. I know that Christine, Ms.?
Krista.
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 Krista, thank you. Krista. So, it's a work in progress with respect to zoning, the zoning board, and we have to make sure that our zoning officials are respectful, and are providing quality service, and making sure that they are extending the proper opinions with respect to, to the laws that they are required to follow. The other issue, I, I thank you for the garden tips, by the way. I'm, I'm in training, so I enjoy that conversation. I'm doing a little work on the house tree, one of my trees came down, so planting new trees, so any advice, just let me know.
Watch your ch- your ch- your g-.
Mr. Landsberg, about your issue, is it possible to send us an email if you run into problems again? It's, it's sad news to hear, that, you know, I know there's no back and forth. Our email is council@westorange.org. Councils@westorange.org, just let us know what kind of barriers you're experiencing. We need to know, so that, you know, we can make any corrections to our process, or advise the administration on how to go about being more business-friendly in the municipality. So, please, let us know.
Sarah, I was asked to send an email to get your wife to talk with us.
So, we're, if we're...
I got an answer, that I even received that.
Okay. Just email us, send us a copy at council@westorange.org. And lastly, let's see, yeah, so I'm glad to hear that we're going to look into the sound systems. I know we spent money working on these microphones, and again, it was the advocacy of some of the residents that were coming in, that resulted in us making a little expenditure in upgrading the actual sound system. So, perhaps we can look into the speakers, I was just looking at the four speakers. They've been here for nine years now? No, I'm sorry, seven years. And it's been, I think it's been the same speakers, so perhaps there's better quality out there that we can invest in. So, with respect to the bumper cars, thank you for that well-thought-out outline, and it's a work in progress, and if it's, you know, and pointing out some potential barriers. Should we find that, you know, it's in not, not in the best interest because of those barriers, you know, we'll make a determination then, but it's not a done deal. Right now, it's just a, we're at the point where a bond ordinance is extended, there's funds that are available, and then we'll make a determination on whether or not, based on pricing, whether or not is the right course of action. If not, that done funding is moved to other categories. So, it's not a done deal, so we, we appreciate that, that information and that feedback. Thank you, Council President.
Council President.
Councilman?
Thank you, thank you, my colleague. I'm not going to repeat what my colleague said, I concur with them, and I agree, these things need to be addressed, and they should be. But one thing that was not discussed tonight, and I've gotten numerous calls from numerous residents, is with our tree planting program, that there are some issues with the trees not being proper, and I'm saying, I'm not saying this is a fact, Mr. Sayers, Mr. Grasso, the saying is that the residents are concerned, they were not either planted properly with the proper mulching, proper sizing, and the height of the mulching, because if you, if you mulch too high and put it around, it, it actually kills the trees, because the water doesn't seep down. But I was just trying to get an idea, is the town looking into the trees, the recent 240 trees?
Yes, we've been on top of it since the, actually, a week and a half ago, I think, two weeks ago, almost two weeks ago. It was brought to our attention, we are out there now watering those trees, the township is, we, there were some questions about the mulch around the trees, which we are now looking into, and we're on top of it.
Okay.
Now, unfortunately, there have been some trees that have, I'm not so sure have died, but are pretty much not in great shape at this point, but we are on top of the issue with regard to the, what we need to do, and I have actually withheld the bill from the, the contractor.
Okay, all right, so if our...
I said I have withheld the bill to pay the contractor.
Thank you, thank you, Linda. So, I'm just concerned, so we're going to make sure that the contractor corrects the issue.
Well, some of the issues are his fault, some of the issues, I believe, are the township's fault.
What, what faults were the townships?
Well, the mulch, if, again, I'm not, I don't know this stuff, but from what I understand, if the mulch wasn't placed properly, that could be the contractor's fault. But there was a, a discussion on whether the contractor was supposed to water the trees versus the township, and when we looked at the contract, the township is supposed to water the trees, not the contractor.
Okay. So, are any trees going to be dug up and replanted, or, because I know that, if you dig up some of the trees, it could kill them too, I mean, you need sometimes to wait.
We are still doing an evaluation, so we're not sure what we're going to do yet, at this point. But it will be, it will be fixed, one way or the other.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, thank you, Council President, that's all I have to say.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Morelli, thank you for the, bringing the checklist for the bumper cars. I'm just curious if, if, Mr. Sayers, do you know what sort of due diligence the township has done on the ice bumper cars to this point?
I know our, both our recreation officials, Mr. Keough and Mr. Johnson, did the research on this. I know they have done the research on it, and brought it back to, to the mayor at that point, and that's why we put it in our budget. There were people in town who actually saw them and asked to have them.
Okay. Did, have, it's, it's hard to question them, because they're not here, but did they convey to you all the due diligence that might help you address some of these issues? Some of these issues sound quite significant, because my son, a few years ago, played roller hockey in that facility up at, at Connor Park, and I just can't believe that we could get more than maybe six or eight of those bumper cars in that, in that area of the ring, so I'm just...
What did we budget? I don't think we budgeted six or eight. I think we budgeted four or five.
Oh, so you...
I, I think that's what we budgeted for, four or five, I'm not sure the exact number. I think we budgeted for either four or five.
So, we have budgeted $110,000 for four or five of these things?
Well, it's not just the cars, it's, it's, as you read in there, there's other things you have to do, so that money's going to pay, not just for the cars, but for all the other things that we have to do to set it up.
I, I think what the mayor was, was considering was, to doing this at this level, and then obviously, if it became very successful, we'd consider perhaps expanding it.
Use the mic, please.
In terms of, in terms of looking at this, I think what the thought was, is to get the, to get a project started, and then, if, depending on where that went, and what the community's response was to it, it would grow or not grow. It's fair to say, I think, that once we come back to you with a proposal to purchase these, by then, all of these issues will be lined up, and we'll be prepared to discuss them, but we're not yet, because we have not finished and completed all the due diligence necessary. So, I think it's really premature to have this kind of discussion at, at that level of detail, until we come back and ask, ask you to actually procure them.
Well, if, if this list is correct, that we need a Zamboni to have a, a clean sheet of ice, that's just totally out of the issue, that's just totally out of the question.
I think that's a little, I think that's a little out of our budget, to be honest with you.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and I just, I, I, really, I, I just don't want to waste any more time, if this is just totally out of bounds. Could we get Mr. Keough to come, maybe, to the next council meeting?
We're not, we're actually not asking you to waste any time on this.
Right.
We're not bringing it up, when we bring it up to you again, it will be after we have done our due diligence, and we feel confident that we have the answers to these questions.
Right.
Until then, I would suggest that, you know, obviously, you know, whatever comments people have, you know, respond to them, and, but we're not going to respond, I don't believe, with any specifics, because we're not prepared to do that.
Right, but if Mr. Keough and Mr. Johnson have done the research, and came back to the point where we put $110,000 in the capital budget, can they not maybe give them, we can give them this list, and have them come and speak to the council?
We're going to look...
Because if you, because if, if, if it's not an appropriate purchase for us, we should probably figure it out now, rather than spending any more, you know, administrative...
That's exactly what we will do. We will, we, the administration will make a determination, what, you know, what, what the issues are, and either decide to come back before you with a recommendation to buy them, or not to, make them back and say that we're recommending, that we do not go down that process. That, that's, you know, we appreciate this information, this will be, we already have certain information, I'm not saying we have this, and I'm not making comment on, on the validity, or the, the, the need for all these things. I'm saying, the administration is going to do its due diligence, and then come back to council, when we decide to share, when we, when we have all the information to share, to make a recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
If I could move on to another subject, the senior citizens' transportation.
Yep.
I know this is not the first time Mrs. Sagalas has been here to complain about transportation, I don't think it's the second time, I think she's been here at least three or four times. And I know you say you don't get a lot of complaints. Does the township track the complaints that we get about transportation?
They go into the health department, and then they either come to me if there's things that need to get done. I'm not sure if they file them or not, to be quite honest with you, I can find that out for you, though.
Okay. Could you find out if the health department tracks complaints about the senior citizen busing, and if they do, could you give us the last three years, give the council the last three years of these complaints?
I will, I will find out tomorrow if they track them.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just the thing about the audio, I've been on the council for eight years, and the audio has just driven me crazy. I know we spent a not insignificant sum of money several years ago to supposedly improve it, but I think what we're talking about tonight, at least in part, is the fact that that air conditioning comes on during the meeting, and it totally changes the, the audio quality and the... and the ability to hear, in here. And I just bring it up because it would be a very simple fix for somebody who has the key to that lockbox to go over there and turn off the, the AC until the meeting is over. And I, I, I don't understand why we're not doing that. We're getting tons of complaints that are interrupting this meeting and I'm not complaining about the complaints, but, but it just seems to me that that could be a potentially easy fix. Is there some reason why we can't turn off the air conditioning?
Well, you also, we're required, we're required to provide an atmosphere that is comfortable as well. So I mean, you, can you turn off the air conditioning? Yes, then it's going to get hot.
Mics work when you speak into them, that's the problem.
Yeah, I mean, if I speak into this microphone just like this and if I raise my voice a little bit, there's no doubt in my mind that people in the back row with the air conditioning on are still going to hear me. So it is, it's about-
Okay, then that's what we need to do.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
Yes, I just wanted to-
It would also help if, if the people out in the audience as well, while people are speaking up here, don't speak over them or don't, aren't speaking because that helps, that makes it very difficult for people to hear both ways. So.
Yes, and, and I encourage the council president, if she's going to allow people to speak from the audience, that we should bring them up here to the, to the podium. I know it's irregular. We can do that if we want, but please, let's not have this back and forth from the audience. We're complaining about hearing, ability to hear, and I can barely hear the people when they're talking in the back. So please, if we're going to do back and forth, let's get them up on, on the podium. I also wanted to just discuss a minute, there are plenty of people that came tonight to talk about the zoning board hearing for the fif, for the ramp, or ramps, for the 15-year-old youngster with, with cerebral palsy. And I went to the meeting and I just think it's important to note a couple, several things. First of all, it was great that the zoning board voted its approval of the variance. But these people had to spend a lot of money and, and a lot of emotional time to come here for three meetings when this probably should have been much shorter. But let me just tell you about some of the things that happened at this meeting. So the chairman of the zoning board recused himself at the beginning of the meeting. And it turns out that his law firm has as a client the trustee for the trust that owns the building and that applied for the zoning variance. It took him three meetings, or at least two meetings, to decide that there was a conflict of interest. I don't understand, I'm sure Deutsche Bank was a client of his before these, this application began heard. I'm sure that the name of the trustee was on the application. So I don't understand why he didn't recuse himself. The replacement, the temporary chairman, the vice chairman, Mr. Neuer, was also requested by the applicant's lawyer to recuse himself because allegedly after the last zoning board meeting, the second meeting, he, I don't know if confronted is the right word, or had words with the applicant's architect in the stairwell. And Mr. Neuer disagreed with what they talked about, a great deal of what they talked about, but he did confirm that he spoke to the witness outside of the hearing room about the application, which should have, should have disqualified himself. But he didn't disqualify himself, he didn't recuse himself, and the zoning board attorney said he didn't have to because from her perspective, what they talked about was not, she didn't use the word germane, but was not relevant to the substance of the hearing. The law on that is, does not allow that.
Councilman, this is, you can finish, please.
At the last council meeting, the council majority voted to provide up to $2,500 to hire an architect to advise on this situation. His name is Peter Ritchie. At the meeting, Mr. Ritchie didn't speak for most of the meeting. Towards the end of the meeting, he was invited to speak. And the first thing he said is that he wanted to give testimony about problems that he foresaw with the construction plans once it got passed the zoning board and into the construction office. And the applicant's attorney immediately jumped on him and said, "That is not the purview of this hearing. It's a simple C variance hearing." And it is no reason to have testimony about something that's going to happen after the hearing. And so the acting chair told him that he couldn't talk about that, and he didn't talk the rest of the day, the rest of the evening. Now, this is a guy that we hired supposedly to help things. He didn't help at all. And I hesitate to wonder how much of that $2,500 we've, we've spent and just wasted.
Point of clarification-
Please, could you just let me, I know you talk a lot of point of clarification. At the last council meeting, Mr., Councilman, could I please finish speaking? Could I please finish?
Does Councilman Kokovia run this meeting? My point of clarification is to the chair, not to Councilman Kokovia.
Do you have a question? Yes.
Isn't it true that, that the councilman does not have sufficient evidence to put it on the table that Mr. Ritchie was not helpful in any other way? He's making a presumption that Mr. Ritchie would extend the minimum assistance to this board. I think it's just, it's, it's a big assumption and it, and it's shedding, it's shedding a negative perception on the decision that was made by the township council to extend that assistance to the zoning. So my suggestion is that we, we, we extend some, we, we let Councilman Kokovia know that we shouldn't base, we shouldn't be extending opinions and, and shedding negative light on decisions made by the township council.
If I could respond. Councilman Cirillo, were you at that hearing? Because if you weren't, you don't know what happened. But let me tell you what happened. Exactly as I said, Mr. Ritchie did not speak besides, if you would just let me finish, if you would just let me finish, Councilman, would you please let me finish? There's no respect involved if you're interrupting me. Please let me finish. Council President, would you please direct Councilman Cirillo to stop interrupting me? I have the floor. I have the floor, Councilman Cirillo. Please stop interrupting me. I didn't interrupt you when you spoke and tried to interrupt me.
This is not on our-
No, 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 no.
Okay.
It has been talked about at the last council meeting and it should be talked about tonight. If you would just let me finish. I was at the, I was at the zoning board meeting. He did not present any testimony. There was no written testimony about, from, from Mr. Ritchie. And he spoke briefly to say he was going to talk about something that was outside of the purview of the zoning board. And that's how I make my estimate that he contributed nothing to that zoning board meeting and that we wasted any money that he, he's, he is going to charge us.
Councilman, again, this is your opinion and we don't know, I was not at the meeting.
Council President?
Please.
May I speak?
Yes, please.
I don't understand why we're having this conversation at all because, as I've said repeatedly, the zoning board and the planning board are autonomous agencies. They have their own lawyer. We don't supervise them. We do make appointments to that board. You can change those appointments if you wish. But we don't run those boards, we, we don't appear before those boards. And it's, I don't see why we're talking about this.
Mr. Kazer, I appreciate your comments, but if the zoning board is acting in a way that is contrary to the law and is trying to, and, and is endangering us from being sued for violations of the American, of Disabilities Act and the Fair Housing Act, I think the council does be concerned about that. And let me just point out that it was the council president that brought up the letter in the first place tonight. So I certainly think that we've already set the agenda here. If you would please stop interrupting me, I have about two more minutes.
The citizens of West Orange, the council being very disrespectful to the citizens of West Orange and the members of the audience. You, Council President, run this meeting. You've been authorized by this board to run this meeting, not Councilman Kokovia. We went back and we have to respect rubbish rules of order and there has to be civility at these meetings for the sake of the folks at home that elect us. That is not good representation.
And civility is not you constantly interrupting me. I was simply replying to Mr. Kazer.
Council President?
If you will let me finish, I have about 60 seconds left of what I'd like to say. And then we can go on with our meeting. I, along with a few residents, decided to start the process of amending our land use ordinance to more clearly reflect legal standards and what we believe is the community's consensus on how to deal with variance applications involving the disabled. I sent a letter to Mr. Greigle, the town planner, to start the process and included some ideas and language of what should be considered as amendments. And this process will go on from him to the entire planning board and then the town council for final review and approval.
At the, at the end of the day, the, the land use boards, both the planning board and the zoning board, are governed principally by the municipal land use law, a state statute that applies to every land use board that exists in the state of New Jersey, regardless of what town it's in. And they have to follow those laws, and if they violate those laws, there are legal remedies. You go to court. And the attorneys who represent the boards, they're separate attorneys, one represents each board, they're responsible to make sure that things are done in a proper fashion. If they don't, then that's their problem and the board's going to have to deal with, with those issues. But, but many applicants have lawyers on their behalf. They're aware of the legal remedies that are available, and if there's a problem, they can go to court.
And what I'm trying to prevent is them, is, is us being involved in litigation because when the zoning board is sued, we, as a town, are the ones that have to pay for it.
I appreciate this letter. As soon as the application, the first planning, the zoning board application was heard, you wrote this all out. This has already been given to, not your letter, but the conversation has already been discussed at the planning board and with the legal department. Changes could not be made in the midst of an application, but this is, these amendments are certainly going to be looked at.
Yeah, the changes can be made. They just can't apply retroactively to any application that's been filed.
They're not going to be, right. But moving forward, we will be able to. Okay. Moving on.
Oh, I-
Councilwoman.
Oh, are you done, counsel?
Yes.
It sure looks like it.
Okay. So, so much going on here. Regard, my comments in regards to the whole situation, and I'm going to wait, put my two cents in, right into the microphone. Our Madam Clerk, hearing the different comments from the last meeting, I'd just like to make sure there was comments in regards to filming and persons taking, you know, from their phone in the meeting. I know you sit with these bodies and let them know with Oprah and whatnot, so have they been informed since that time that they can film with the, with their cameras?
Well, from what I understand, the zoning board, I don't know if they have their own rules and regulations or, you know, under the law or what. Maybe Ken was, no, I don't know. But what I was told was that you're not allowed to take a picture. You are allowed to video. You aren't allowed to take a picture. And what happened was somebody got up and took a picture and they were asked to delete it off their phone. It was not a video, it was a picture.
Okay.
That's what I was told. And I don't know, you know, I mean, we videotape all our meetings, so I'm familiar with council rules and what we do. But as far as planning and zoning.
Okay. Maybe I'm getting confused with our commissions that you helped to educate through, so, but they have their own process and they follow their-
From what I was told, I don't know if it's, you know.
Okay.
She deleted it.
You know, in this community, like to see the situation, and, and I've known Krista for a long time and to see her come here, you know, it was, it was a heartfelt situation. And, you know, you know, I sat over 10 years on the school board and, you know, special education, folks move here because we're very, we're very, I wouldn't just say accommodating, but caring and educated on, on what we could do for children. So I'm not going to, to make judgments because I wasn't at the meetings, I read minutes, I heard some recordings, a little, you know, disappointed in some comments. And again, you know, we're up here and we're supposed to be politicians. Folks on the zoning board, they're not used to being in our situation or having that much interaction with the public, so. But, you know, hope all, all was learned from this situation and we could make some amendments. I know going to the planning board a few months back with the senior citizen report and Mr. Greigle was there and, you know, it's part of the aging in place and, and the, the new master plan and looking at these ramps. And, and that's part of what he is, Mr. Greigle, is supposed to do for us. So hopefully we could get some, you know, some amendments in place that will make this situation from happening again. But I know I did personally talk to one of my appointments and, you know, these situations are tough because we're talking about children and, you know, some folks think they're doing their job and maybe not know how to articulate that to the public. It could get a little, little tough. So hopefully everyone, this was a learning experience, but I'm really happy that the family, you know, ha, will have what they need for their child. So let's, hopefully we can all move forward and, and learn from this and let this be a learning opportunity. We talked about the transportation. Again, Councilwoman Cirillo, I'll follow up with you. And again, Ms. Allenardi, I know she's very, very diligent with her resident. She's very good with communication. And I, again, I, I think this, this will be, this won't be an issue in the future. Again, you know, you can't help that with traffic. And in regards to the situation with, I guess it was with zoning and Mr. Langsner, I don't know, sir, thank you for coming down and notifying of your issue. And our emails are all found, are all, you could find them on the website, so if you ever want to email us individually to let us know of your issue, if you don't, you don't want to make the trip here. But I'm interested in, you know, seeing what we could do to expedite some of these issues and hopefully, I know they're inundated in that department and I guess I want to ask Mr. Sayers, how are things? I know they've been very, very busy there. And-
I don't understand what you're saying.
In regards, so in regards to the zoning issue with Mr. Langsner, I know the department has been inundated and the process and, and the timeframe, but I mean, a call back, are there people on vacation lately? You know, obviously some kind of communication, that shouldn't be the norm, and I don't think it is.
This is the first I've heard of this complaint. If he had called my office and mentioned something to me, I would be able to give you some answers, but I can't. But I will talk to Janice tomorrow and find out what's going on.
Yeah, great. And, and Mr., and what's your, what's your number, Council President? Can we get his phone number or after the meeting, can you?
I think he's, we advised him to email us and we'll go from there.
Okay, yeah. I don't want you to give them your number on, on television. You could just hand it to Mr. Sayer, you could hand it right over to Mr. Sayers. That'd be the best way to take care of it. So. Now this way he could follow up and call him.
Okay.
All right, so that, that's about it. We have a long meeting and thank you all for your comments. And Sally, thank you for the plant.
Resolution or consent agenda? Sorry.
Okay. Approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting, June 12th, 2018.
Move it.
Report of township officers, none. Readings of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
Yes.
Resolutions, resolution 153-18 is being pulled, this, pulled off the agenda. Are there any other resolutions being pulled this evening?
Question, let me see. Madam Clerk, resolution, and the resolution authorizing the transfer of ownership. I do see representatives here from our redevelopment council. We'll have that discussion, please.
End. 166-18.
Councilwoman Catalina, do you have anything? Any question?
I just wanted, and Mr. Grei- I just wanted, Mr. Gross, just our, Mr. Lepore, oh, here you are, you're in the corner here, just talk a little about some of the letter J, some of the improvements to the library.
Just questions or you want to poll?
No, I don't need a poll, just questions.
Okay.
Councilwoman Sorel.
I don't have, don't have anything at this time.
Questions, Councilman Guarino?
I just have questions about the purchases for the police interceptors.
Yes, you want to poll or you just have questions?
I just have questions.
No more, Councilman, if you have anything?
No, if, excuse me, if Resolution 166-18 is being pulled, then we can just discuss it then.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented.
Councilman Guarino, your question on the police interceptor?
Sure, thank you, Council President. Mr. Gross, I'm just gonna say, not that I'm questioning the purchase, what I'm saying is, you know, people constantly say that we have all the police cars outside. So of these five interceptors, what are they replacing?
These will be replacing, first off, let's tell you what, how they're going to be used. There are going to be, four of them are on patrol, one is going to be in the detective bureau. The way we do our vehicles is that the newer vehicles replace vehicles within those departments than that, so four of the patrol vehicles and a vehicle from the DB will move. Now, if they are in a condition to keep, they will move down and to another department that can use them, which will then move another vehicle. Five vehicles will come off and out of the fleet and be put up for auction based on the purchase of these vehicles.
Okay.
So at the very least, we are, we have become over the past few years, much more aggressive in trying to trim down the fleet and we're going to continue that aggression. So like I said, at least five vehicles will come off because, and more, there's a couple more vehicles on the agenda tonight. But certainly vehicle for vehicle, we will be reducing our fleet.
Okay, so these are four for patrol and one for detective bureau?
That's correct.
Okay, and they'll be taken, then five of the other, older police vehicles will be-
Will go somewhere.
Somewhere else or-
You know, it depends on the patrol, patrol probably, sometimes the patrol vehicles are the worst that we have, so it will be a direct.
Yeah.
So once they come in, we, you know, we'll make that determination.
Okay, and these are both through consortium?
They'll be, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Gross.
On the police interceptors, yeah?
Yeah, just a quick question on that resolution, Mr. Gross. We're purchasing from the Cranford Cooperative contract. My question is, do we also compare with state contracts?
Yes, yes, yes. We always go, we always go with where we're going to get our most value for what we're buying, so we look at them all and there are small variations and that's why Cranford's not one we usually go to, but this one, this time it was the lowest, so.
And the cooperative group or entity, is that formed by the municipality or are those independent?
Different entities, you know, to the extent this one is done through Cranford, that's the case, it can be done, anybody can do a co-op.
And that's where I'm headed. Are there savings to the municipalities or some sort of, not only savings, but is there a financial benefit to a municipality that puts together a cooperative that can access by other local government entities?
Uh-
Just looking to see if that's something to consider down the road.
Ultimately, there may be some benefit, you'd have to look and see how they were billing in terms of, for instance, if they have office space that they're using and that the co-op is paying for the office space, that could be, you know, that could be occurring. You know, which would be rightfully so if the town has excess space and they're committing it to a regional effort, that would, you know, and that certainly probably is being budgeted outside their cap. So there's a lot of things. Having said that, I would not think that there's an overwhelming benefit because there's not a lot of places do it. There's very few entities of that size do it and mostly because they probably don't get the participation from as many groups as a county would and other regions. But having said that, there's no reason not to.
Look into it and I appreciate that, and you answered my original question, which was, did we compare with other cooperatives? Thank you.
Counsel President, I just have a quick question.
Mr. Gross, on Resolution 153-18, authorizing the cancellation of property taxes for 665 Eagle Rock Avenue, was there a reason why the resolution was withdrawn?
Yeah, we shouldn't ask lawyers to do mathematics. So that's the, we need to edit it.
Good, thank you. Okay, so we'll go with Resolution 161-18 on the police interceptors, questions are answered? 162-18 on the library, Councilwoman.
So, thank you, Council President. So, Mr. Lepore, I just thought it'd be great to just inform the public that what we're looking at with improvements for the West Orange Public Library this year.
Sure. Unfortunately, there was a portion of a proposal that was not included in your package, but that was a copy of the letter that went to the successful architectural firm, but also attached to the request for proposal was an outline of what we were seeking them to design. And those design improvements were based on a study that the library had performed by another architect back in October of 2015. So that included such items as roof replacement, some chimney repairs to the exterior. Interior would be compliance with Americans with Disabilities Act, HVAC improvements, including exhaust fans through various restrooms that are in the building, replacing plumbing fixtures and accessories, some of the plumbing fixtures date back to the original building, which go back to the late 1950s, upgrading the electrical service, upgrading and replacing the fire alarm system. There is a small kitchenette that the staff uses that would be upgraded and we'd also replace ceiling tiles, both in the upper and lower level.
Yeah. Okay, so question? Question regards to the lower level, the room, I know some work had to be done there, obviously that would, that's some of the ceiling tiles and the electrical that was down in that lower level?
Well, this would be some improvements in the lower level. I know, I think whether it's the library board itself or the friends of the library have some other ideas about capturing and using that space differently, that's not taken into consideration in this proposal.
Well, as far as that space, let's start with maximum capacity. I know it had to pass some fire inspections or some work had to be done to increase the capacity, the usage capacity. Would that be addressed in these?
That's currently not being addressed.
That's not being addressed yet, okay. And is that because of the way they mapped it out on their five-year plan or just the funding?
Pretty much the way they had mapped it out in their plan.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Lynn, before you leave, do any of these improvements at the library qualify for the direct install program because the library's on that list?
I don't, well, perhaps the one HVAC unit and we could consider that and perhaps delete that if that building is eligible. At one time, we thought that building was eligible on, under another program, but it was removed. So now we went ahead and are requesting through this design plan to replace the one remaining HVAC unit that hasn't been replaced in the past several years. If that program can be implemented soon enough, then we'll, we'll delete it from this plan.
Okay, good, thank you. Thank you. Any other questions on Resolution 162, yes? Councilwoman Sorel?
Yes, Mr. Lepore, how much are we budgeting for this rehab or improvement?
You know what, I did not bring that with me. I know, Mr. Gross, we had about, I know we added money in this year's budget and-
We added $600,000 in this year's budget.
And we had some money still from, I think, last year's budget. So it's a little bit in excess of, I'll say approximately $750,000, maybe to $800,000.
Sufficient?
Believe so, yes.
And yeah, it probably went a little bit over the average percentage because you were also doing asbestos monitoring.
There's-
Please use the mic. I'm in the second row and I can't hear you. I'm so sorry, yes, yes, I'm so sorry. What I asked was what the total construction cost was that had been budgeted for that improvement and the answer was between $750,000 to $800,000. And my follow-up question was why the percentage is a little bit above the average expense for architectural services and the answer was because there's just some lead issues that need to be addressed, which explains a little bit of a higher expenditure for the, for the work, for the architectural work to be done. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Any other questions on the resolution?
Thanks, thank you, Lynn.
Resolution N, I pulled, that was about the resolution authorizing the transfer of certain ownership interest in the DGP Urban Renewal and Prism Green Associates. I know we have a legal counsel here from our redevelopment.
Yeah, let me just give you a little synopsis.
Okay.
Basically what it is, is there is a organization called Origami who has bought out some of Greenfield's investments and my understanding is it was six or seven of their investments they bought out and one of the investments that they bought out was our redevelopment project. So technically, it's as simple as I can put it. So what they did was they bought out Greenfield's investment and one of the investments that they bought out was our redevelopment project, therefore we have to basically agree to that. And that's it.
No other changes?
No other changes. And I have our redevelopment council and our financial advisor here to discuss any, you know, to answer any questions that you may have about it. We've discussed this with them and we feel that it's not a, not a big deal. But if you have any questions, they're here to answer your questions.
Jen, can you talk about this resolution, please?
Good evening, Jennifer Credidio from the Firm of McManam &amp; Scotland Embowman. We serve as special redevelopment council to the township. I'm a little shorter than that. I'm sorry, Council President, you requested an overview or you have specific questions regarding the-
No, basically an overview, if it's anything different than what Jack said or-
No, I think Jack described it very accurately. Included in your package along with the form of resolution were the form of ownership charts before and after, both for the Phase One Edison Battery Project, also for the Phase Two, you know, project that would be Edison Village developing around the battery factory. The only change indicated on both of those charts would be the disposition of the Greenfield interest to an entity, a Delaware limited liability company called Terra Verity Four LLC, which is owned, Terra Verity Four LLC, which is owned by two Origami funds as indicated in your resolution.
Councilwoman Sorel.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the labeling of the charts are not really clear, I don't know what's what. I know that, you know, you mentioned that there's a before and after. I just had one, two, three, four, five, six different charts here.
No, it is four.
Yeah, you have four charts, I believe that two of them may have been sent a second time, which would make six. Basically for Phase One, you have a before and after, for Phase Two, you have a before and after. Phase One is, if you look at the bottom of the chart, Councilman, to the center, indicates Edison Battery Factory in a balloon circle in the middle. And then if you go one up from there, it shows DGP Urban Renewal LLC.
We're not following, at least I'm not.
On the Edison Battery?
Yeah, so let's look at the first chart, the first chart, with your approval, Council President.
Yeah, go ahead.
The first chart states Prism Green Associates Four LLC.
Right, those are the Phase Two charts.
Okay, so these are the Phase Two charts.
Correct.
Okay, so this is the new Phase Two chart and then this is the new Phase Two, Phase One chart for the Edison Battery.
Councilman, if you don't mind, I'll loan you my copy, which is labeled at the top. I probably should have done that for you before we distributed them. So if you're looking on the Phase One charts, you'll see in the second column from the right, a number of wholly owned Greenfield entities. Those are replaced in the after chart with Terra Verity Four LLC. They own, the Terra entity will acquire Greenfield's 32.5% interest in DG Edison, I'm sorry, DGP Edison LLC, which wholly owns DGP Urban Renewal. DGP Urban Renewal is the redeveloper for Phase One. So this transfer would be for 32.5% ownership, ownership interest in the entity which owns the redeveloper for Phase One. I kept meaning to look up what Terra Verity meant because it's been a very long time since high school Latin, but I didn't-
It means land.
It means land.
I have a question. Councilman Koby spoke about unpaid property taxes. Do we have any type of leverage with respect to this approval? Can it be conditional? We have to make sure those property taxes are paid. I know that they do have, they do have a track record in eventually paying taxes with interest, but we have to make sure that they're all to be.
Taxes will be paid up to date, trust me. They always pay up to date.
But is there a condition on this?
My question, is there a condition to the transaction, correct? Or is the transaction already took place?
The transaction has not taken place. Our, the township's consent is required prior to the transaction taking place. You know, as a general rule, and Mr. Kizer may disagree with me, I try to stay away from conditional approvals because it becomes difficult later to determine sometimes whether conditions are met and sometimes it can become an issue for- For the record, the first time I've ever been accused of being too quiet.
We're going to shut it now, it's night, it's dark.
So with respect to the approval, I mean, obviously it is the, it's the purview of the council to determine how they would like to proceed with that, but as a general rule, sometimes conditional approvals can become difficult for investors or other legal entities because it requires an extra steps of them ensuring in a future event, perhaps, you know, years down the road, that that condition has been met.
I agree with the general rule, but if the council really wants to-
Surely.
Try to make it a condition, it can. I don't have any lack of confidence that we're going to get our taxes paid, I mean, not-
You know what, we have a professional here and she explains that whenever these transactions take place, you usually have, you have to make sure that, you know, all any liabilities are addressed when closing, you can explain.
I'm not into commercial real estate, but I certainly am aware that, you know, taxes are paid often based on business considerations and the timing that they're paid is based on business considerations and since we get 18% penalty when they're not paid, you know, we don't really complain that much about that, so it's really, I don't know what their reason is for non-payment.
And we always get our tax money. There's no doubt about that. I mean, if we, if we had to go to tax sale, we would get our money. So it's not, it's not, it's not like a revolving, you know, credit account. We will, we will receive our funds, you know, and so again, it's something that we don't feel is a risk at this point.
Councilman, another question?
No, that's about it. It sounds like, you know, it has to get to our closing and if not, somehow we'll be collecting, we'll send the tax, the tax guy to knock on the door.
Tax woman.
Thank you.
We already have them.
Councilman.
I don't think saying that we will eventually get the taxes fully addresses what is in the contract. or they're subject to a letter of a notice of default. So I'm not arguing with anybody about we eventually get the taxes and then we pay 18%. I'm arguing that we have what appears to me to be a bad faith partner here in our contract, because these guys, Prism has been delinquent on their taxes virtually every quarter for five years. I think they've been current four times. So the point is not that we're going to get the taxes, but that they are not complying with the contracts that they've already signed, so why should we be, why should we, A, not exercise our right for a notice of default, and why should we continue to do business with them if they're showing that they don't have much regard for the contracts that they've already written?
First of all, it's already in the contract. All you're doing is you're changing investors here. You're not changing anything but the investors. So the contract remains the same. And the councilman is correct, they haven't paid their taxes on time in the last five years, but we've always got the taxes paid, and we've always gotten 18% interest on their taxes. So the third thing I'd like to say is they have a lot of money invested in this project, and I doubt they're not going to pay their taxes and lose their investment. But that's a decision you guys have to make. But what you need to understand is that the current agreement already has that in there, and it's not going to change. That agreement doesn't change.
Thank you.
I have a few other questions, too. I still have the floor. Ms. Codillo, in the resolution, in the first, second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, whereas it says, whereas DGP is wholly owned by DGP Edison LL3, but DGP as a standalone word or acronym is not previously defined in the resolution. Can you tell me what that reference to DGP actually is referring to, please?
I certainly can, councilman, and if you didn't receive my answers to your written questions on Friday, I apologize. I endeavored to send those out as soon as I received them. So you are correct in your email correspondence when you said, is this, does DGP mean DGP Urban Renewal LLC? Yes, it does.
Okay. Just as a follow-up of your comment, I got answers to all of my questions after 6:00 tonight, so I don't know...
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that.
No, no, but that's what happens, is I, it's so late and so soon before the meeting, I oftentimes don't have a chance to even read through them. But this is a continuing problem, where I get the answers to my questions just before 6:00, or just in this case, after 6:00. So I appreciate you letting me know that you actually answered it on Friday. Could you tell me anything that you know about this new entity? In terms of who they are, who, what they do, what their investors are, what they plan to do with this?
Councilman, I think that question's better addressed by Michael Hanley, the township's financial advisor, who's had conversations with Origami and is here tonight. I don't know if you want to go back and forth, or if you'd like to run through questions for me, questions for him.
Whatever the chair would like to...
Well, if Mike has the answers.
Why don't you finish asking her the question? Then let Mike come up and answer his question. That's all I'm saying.
If you have more questions, forget it.
Yes, I do.
They could both be there.
Yes. In the two whereas's below, it says, DGP and Prism have requested the consent. And I'm curious about Prism's role in this, because Prism, my understanding is, in Phase One, they have given away all of their equity, or sold it, or whatever they did, all of their equity interest in Phase One. So I'm trying to find out why, what role they would have in asking us...
Councilman, the request for transfer, as indicated in the charts, deals with both Phase One and Phase Two, with Greenfield's interest in both of those. So the Prism request relates to the Phase Two chart and the Phase Two transfers.
Okay. And if I understand the charts correctly, Origami and its entities will become minority equity owners in both properties. Is that correct?
That's incorrect with respect to Phase Two.
Okay. What happens in Phase Two?
Phase Two Greenfield, now I gave my charts away. Phase Two Greenfield, I believe it's a 99% interest in Prism Green Associates Four, the investor interest. Thank you.
Ninety-five, mhm, 95%.
Mhm.
I'm sorry, it's a 95% interest in Prism Green Associates Four, currently held by Greenfield Prism LLC, which after transfer would be held by Terra Veriti Four LLC.
Okay, so the new entities, Origami and its affiliates, are going to be minority owners in Phase One.
Correct.
But they will be clearly majority owners in Phase Two.
That's accurate, yes.
Okay. And they have 95%, and who will be holding the other 5%?
It will continue to be Prism West Orange Redevelopment LLC.
Which is clearly stated on the chart.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. I would certainly like to hear from your colleague, if there's no other questions of you from the panel.
Thank you. Mike Hanley from NW Financial. Origami is a investment manager. They raise, this is their third fund, Third Origami Fund. It raised about $370 million in 2016. They invest in a variety of assets and kind of focus on things that have existing ownership challenges. As we know, the history of this project, this is a good target for them. As Jen described, they are completing their due diligence period, and this is the last of the six properties that they're diligencing to, and their due diligence period ends in July. So they will, as this ends, purchase the six properties from Greenfield, and it includes, you know, the properties we are discussing. They are not only a real estate investor, they invest in all types of troubled assets in different places, and they, you know, they invest in other funds, technology, they invest in real estate in Germany. So they're selecting assets that they think they can succeed in making money in, generally. As it relates to ownership, there will be two entities that are their investors that would exceed 10% ownership in the total project. They are a pension fund in Alberta, Canada, for public employees, and a pension fund and an endowment from the University of Toronto.
Do you know what the value of the transaction is?
No.
Did you ask?
No, it's a collective transaction across the six properties. They indicated, you know, that that wasn't something they were going to disclose.
Okay, so they didn't give you any sort of the evaluation of these two's properties, or either of these two properties here, Phase One and Phase Two?
No, they did not.
Okay. Do they actually have operating experience? Do they actually operate the projects that they purchase to get them out of trouble?
They're a financial investor. I mean, they hire operators, and Prism will remain in the role they've been in in managing the project. They are replacing Greenfield as a financial investor, and will have management of the entities because of their ownership interest, but, you know, they're not going to take over the role of Prism in this case.
Okay. And who are the typical investors in Origami? You mentioned a couple of institutional investors. Is that primarily institutional?
Pension funds, endowments, large family offices, you know, the types of institutional investors you'd expect to see in a hedge fund.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions?
I'm with the documentation.
Thanks, Mike.
Is there a motion to adopt 166-18?
So moved.
So moved. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Garino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Krokoviac?
No.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
Okay, motion is carried. Ordinance on second and final reading, 2545-18, and ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter Seven, Traffic Subsection Seven-32.2, Restricted Parking Zones of the Revised Ordnances, 108 Roosevelt Avenue, 52 Llewellyn Avenue, 132 Watson Avenue, and 18 McKinley Avenue. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Garino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
Does anyone have any comments or questions on this ordinance?
No.
Public.
Seeing, I know there are people here, I didn't know if they were here on this ordinance, apparently not. Seeing none? Colleagues?
Questions?
Seeing none. Make a motion to approve ordinance 2545-18?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Garino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
Ordinances on first reading, 2546-18, and ordinance amending Chapter Twenty, Sections 4.2 of the Revised General Ordnances, Exceptions to Obstruction of Streets and Sidewalks. This ordinance revised the Township's Code provision governing restrictions on sports apparatuses such as basketball hoops and hockey nets installed adjacent to streets and sidewalks. Is there a motion to approve on, I'm sorry, introduce on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Garino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman, I'm sorry, Council President McCartney?
Yes.
Pending matters, new matters, council discussion.
Do we have a question on this?
Yep. I guess, Mr. Lapore. Oh, question. So just to wrap my head around this, so what this ordinance is currently had stated was that if you have a portable basketball hoop or hockey net, you're allowed to play in the street, and then obviously take it out of the street. Now, unless you have it permanent, affixed to the property, you can only use it, or is that the, wait, I'm confused.
No, it's saying if you're going to have it permanently affixed, it has to be on your property, not in any part of the right-of-way. This would still allow somebody to place something portable, but...
Okay. So, but if fixing...
But it limits the hours of use.
If you want, I can probably answer this question a lot better than I can. The issue was, is that...
Yeah, what's the issue?
The issue is, is that people didn't want these things left in the streets all the time.
Oh, yeah.
So we're changing the ordinance to say, you either got to leave it on your property, or if you put it on the street, you got to bring it in and take it off the street and put it in your driveway. That's really what this whole ordinance is about.
Okay, so it's not like somebody's going to have to stick a pole in between the sidewalk and the street in that little patch of grass. We're not allowing that. Okay, all right. I could understand what you're driving at with this.
Not at all.
Okay.
It had to do with some complaints that we got, not from people who had to have these basketball courts out on the street, and there were other people who didn't want them out on the streets.
I assume these are people on cul-de-sacs that may, they may leave them out? I would...
I don't know exactly where they live, but we had, we sat down with legal, and we had them go over the best way to do it, and this is the ordinance they came up with.
Okay.
But the issue is, is so that you don't leave...
Sure.
The basketball in that industry for any long periods of time.
Oh, no, yeah, you shouldn't, yeah. Okay, thank you. I just need a little clarification.
That's all it was.
I have a couple of questions.
Jack, this has been in, this ordinance has been in effect for almost 18 or 20 years.
Yeah, I know.
Okay. And people still have the equipment? Councilman?
I was going to ask my colleagues if they thought that, well, since we're already changing this, that perhaps we clarify a bit more of the wording here. It says apparatus such as basketball backboards. Now, when I hear the word backboards, I think of, in a basketball context, it's the backboard that you hit the ball off of, and I think what we're really talking about here is the actual goals. And I wonder if we should change backboards to goals, for clarity's sake?
Well, they're not really goals. I mean, goals could be goal nets, too. I mean, you know...
No, but it's to say basketball goals instead of basketball backboards, because it...
Don't they all have backboards, though?
They do all have backboards, but the "they" that you're referring to is a basketball goal. A basketball goal has not only the backboard, it also has the rim where the basketball goes through, it has the net underneath it, and it has a pole that holds the goal up, the rim up, and then it has a base, on a portable base, that, you know, you fill it with water or sand to hold it.
Oh, they're not called backboards? Those are called goals?
I don't know. It sounds like you guys all call them backboards. That's not what I know them as. So if no one wants to do that...
I don't know what the terminology is.
Yeah, I don't mind clarifying the language, as long as it's, I don't know which one's right.
Yeah, but the hoop is the hoop we're talking about. The actual structure itself.
No, the hoop, in reference to a basketball goal, is the rim, where the ball goes through. But again, you wouldn't say basketball rim, you wouldn't say basketball hoop, you would say basketball goal. What we're really talking about is a basketball...
I've never heard that term before.
I know, dear.
On the look of Dix.
Okay, I won't waste any more time.
That's a New Yorker.
No, I don't mind changing it, I just wonder what it is.
It's on first reading, if that's not materially different.
I'll speak to legal, but I'm pretty sure that the reason we used backboard is because every basketball, the decent nets are all backboards that are on a pole, and they're in the street, and people don't want them in the street constantly. You know, if you want to put it out on the street and let your kid play during the day, that's fine, but at night, you got to bring it in, or unless it's attached to your property.
And there were also hours of operation in here also.
Right, right, right.
It mentions the public right-of-ways. Could I understand how wide the public right-of-ways is in West Orange?
How wide they are? I'm not really sure, but Letty knows.
It says, unless it is permanently affixed entirely on the apparatus owner's real property and not onto any public right-of-ways or easements.
In most residential public streets in West Orange, there's a 10-foot right-of-way or sidewalk area between the curb and the property.
Okay, so to me, what this proposed ordinance is saying is that there can't be even a non-permanent within 10 feet of the roadway. Is that, am I misreading that?
I think you are. It's allowing a temporary structure to be placed in that sidewalk area.
It can't be there consistently. That's the issue.
Okay, unless it is permanently affixed entirely onto the apparatus owner's real property, I can understand that, permanent meaning, you know, it's in a concrete base, it's in the ground, right? That's not going anywhere, and not onto any public right-of-ways or easements. So, you know, the clause says, shall not be permanently placed on or immediately contiguous to a street or sidewalk unless it is permanently affixed entirely onto the apparatus owner's real property and not onto any public right-of-ways or easements.
Let me, I got to read it, because this, I think, is an exception to what the obstruction is. So let me, I...
Excuse me, Councilman?
On public property, on township property.
Permanently, that's the key word.
Unless it is permanently affixed entirely onto the owner's property.
Right, because people sometimes put the, you know, pole up right on the grassy corner of the sidewalk.
Right, and I believe in certain zoning, there's certain setbacks and things like that before you can put a structure, so...
Yeah, I wouldn't recommend doing that.
So a permanent one, I doubt, could go in the front yard.
Yeah, I wouldn't recommend that.
Right.
Excuse me, Councilman, according to dix.com, they are portable basketball hoops, is the correct language. Yes, but I also found it's a basketball goal system, which includes all the parts that were mentioned.
Okay, can we, let's move this along, we're getting too much into technical, I mean...
If I could, Councilman Garino, I thought you made my point.
No, I didn't.
Which is that, was that if there is a... Which is that, was that if there is a basketball, whatever you call it, I call it a goal, that is permanently affixed within 10 feet of the street, it's got to be taken down. Is that, that's what I'm worried about. That's what I'm worried about, that that's what it says.
No, I'm agreeing. Well, I'm just saying, I just-
Anything that's not permanently installed, it's got to be moved.
Right.
Yeah. So they can't-
Especially when there's no plowing when they get plowed.
And you can't put one in permanent wherever we have a right-of-way. Nor can you put anything permanent that might be in violation of zoning laws. Because permanent structures would apply to the zoning.
Yeah, because even in your backyard, there's setbacks for it.
What's that?
Even in the backyard, would there be a setback? If you've put a portable port?
To the extent it would be considered a structure.
Yeah.
My point is, I don't think you could necessarily just put one in your front yard. Permanent.
Right, but it doesn't necessarily have to be in the front yard. If your backyard came up on a roadway, you could do that.
Yeah.
So-
But it has to be on your property, not on anything we have right-of-way. But those are probably there already.
If you read the section of the ordinance which is imprinted, it talks about not obstructing rights of way. And then this becomes an exception of what we will allow to be placed in the right-of-way as a, quote, obstruction with conditions.
That's the temporary one.
Right.
The temporary one is the exception.
Correct.
So it's allowed to be there, but then you have to remove it after you use it.
You got to remove it. You got to move it.
Yeah.
No, I understand the concept. I'm just not sure that the language says that. It seems to me to say the exact opposite. But I won't beg, beggar the question anymore. I'll just vote against it.
Okay. All right, let's talk. Are we going to change apparatus such as basketball goal system instead of backboards?
The general public would certainly know that a backboard is basketball. They may know it's something else as well. But basketball is probably, the backboard is probably a pretty common terminology.
I think you can leave it as is for now. If, I didn't work on this, obviously, but whoever did, you know, can look at it a little more in-depth than if they decide that they want to make a change in language. It's not going to be a material change. It's just going to be a better descriptive language, that's all.
Okay. Make a motion to introduce?
We already did.
On first reading?
Yeah, we're just discussing it. We don't even have to take about-
Now we're on pending matters, new matters, and council discussion, if any.
Motion to ABC?
Yeah.
Yep.
Make a motion to-
The chair and as a council, and reconvene as the ABC board.
Thank you, Council President.
You do that, Chair?
Yes.
And is there a second?
Good night, West Orange.